Okay, we're gonna get the council meeting of April 23rd started here at 5:12 PM. If the clerk could please call and roll.
Thank you. Councilmember Warren, Councilmember Harris, Councilmember Hanson, Councilmember Carr, Councilmember Jennings, Councilmember Shinier, Vice Mayor Guerra.
Here. Do we have a quorum?
We do have a quorum.
Orms present, Councilmember Harris, would you join us and would you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, if you could read the first item, please.
Our first presentation is regarding Arbor Day. Councilmember Harris.
Thank you very much, Madam Clerk. As you all know, we are fortunate to live in a city with a tremendous tree canopy, one of the finest in the world, and that's due in no small part to the Tree Foundation, who really, you know, three decades ago started on a program to enhance and expand our tree canopy, and with great effect. We know that trees offer us an awful lot of benefits. They cleanse our air, they keep us cool in a very hot climate. Frankly, I don't know about you, but I wouldn't be living in Sacramento if we didn't have the tree canopy that we have. So, this, I have a resolution here. I'll just read one, one part of it, and then I'd like to have a couple of people come up and talk about why we're here and celebrating this. March 7th through March 14th was recognized as California Arbor Week, and this week, April 26th, is National Arbor Day. So, those are very significant dates for us as Sacramentoans, and to celebrate the history of our city. I'd like to ask our city arborist Kevin Hawker and Ray Tretheway, the leader of the Tree Foundation, to come up to the podium and perhaps say a few words, and then I'd like to present you with this, with this resolution.
I'll keep my comments brief. In Sacramento, it seems like every day is Arbor Day, so we're all very familiar with how much we love our trees. Recently, through the Urban Forest Master Plan, we learned that we have over 19 percent canopy, and to put that in perspective, we can fit our neighbor of West Sacramento all in our shade. That's how much shade we have.
I'm sure they'd enjoy that.
Yes. And, so, one of the things about Arbor Day is a time to reflect on what the trees give us, and one of the things that it tells us is that we, we need to keep growing, we keep, need to reach for the sky, we keep needing to get better and better. So, this year, for California Arbor Week, we didn't just plant one tree, we didn't just plant five trees. We planted 30 trees over at Valley High Park with Councilmember Rick Jennings' help there, and we also planted about, I think it was over 400 trees at Fisherman's Lake over there. So, we're, and we have a lot more tree planting events coming up. We're not done yet.
Kevin, you would be remiss to not mention the 100 trees we've planted in River Park as well.
I'm leaving out thousands of trees that we've planted as well. I'm saving that for the big end-of-the-year celebration on that. We've planted over, you know, we've planted some in River Park, we've planted some in, off of Franklin Boulevard, we planted a lot in a lot of different places. So, like I said, we're just getting warmed up, and more to come.
So, I think it's fair to say that our tree mitigation fund is doing some good work.
That's absolutely correct. Our tree mitigation fund is enabling us to do some good work in every council district. I've got strong plans to do a project in every council district, and we're on track for some good work with that.
Excellent. Thank you. Ray Tretheway. Hey, welcome.
Thank you, Councilmember Harris, Mayor, City Council members. Happy Arbor Day.
Happy Arbor Day.
Absolutely. It's certainly a deep, deep tradition in Sacramento, and as the council member said, it's why we live here, it's why we move here, it's why we stay here. And, it's really been a remarkable year, as Mr. Hawker just mentioned, just a couple of the examples, and he could've gone on, but you have a, you have a meeting tonight to, to attend to with a large agenda. But, it's also was the first time in the history of City Sacramento that your park department had a full-time arborist. Congratulations. I know the public loves it, they love the arborist, and I think it's, it's changing the park department around to, you know, recreation entries, and make it a park for all of people. Also, just wanna mention that, you know, the urban forest touches all of our lives, as Councilmember Harris said, and so we work with Leslie Fritsch on the Hanami Line, with Linda Wilcox on your Urban Forest Master Plan, with Jennifer Banana on your Sustainability Plan, and certainly with everybody over at SHRA on the Twin Sider, Twin Rivers Renewal. And like Kevin, I probably just began to scratch the many people that you have directed to enrich and enhance our urban forest. So, it's your celebration, it's something that, you picked up a legacy from past councils. I mean, way back in the very beginning, they planted trees in 1857 for flood protection. The next planting by the city council was for public health. So, continue the good work, and happy Arbor Day.
Thank you, Ray, and I'd also like to commend you on the urban wood, Urban Forest Wood Rescue Project that you've been working on. You know, now and again, we have to, we have to cut trees to affect projects that, that we find great value in, but Ray is out there salvaging that wood, sawing it up into slabs, and so it's reused for furniture and in some of the projects that we actually are building. Great work.
Ray, you and the Tree Foundation treasures to our city. Thank you, and happy Arbor Day. Okay. Is there a tree in the background? Okay. Thank you. Let's move to the second presentation, and this is the Sacramento History Museum presentation. Councilmember Hanson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to have Bob Cicado, who's the president of the Board of the Sacramento History Museum, and Delta Mello, who's the executive director, come down. It's almost unheard of for an arts organization to come and present us with a check, but the History Museum just finished a major set of improvements paid for by the city to remove a dilapidated escalator and to make other improvements, and I know, Mr. Mayor, you care a lot about the waterfront in Old Sacramento, and so we just have a quick opportunity for them to explain why they're giving us money, and to hear from the History Museum. So, welcome, and thanks for all you're doing. The reopening was spectacular and very popular.
Thank you. Thank you very much, and thank you, Mayor Steinberg, members of the council, and Councilmember Hanson. We're here today, as he said, to do something that's a little different. We're gonna give you some money, and I'll get to that in a minute. My name is Delta Pick Mello, as I've been introduced, the executive director and CEO of the Sacramento History Alliance, and I'm here with our board president, Bob Cicado, as well as members of the Board of Directors behind me, some staff, and some of our more interesting characters from history. The Sacramento History Alliance is the new name of the Historic Old Sacramento Foundation. Our name implies the many partnerships that we have with the city, the county, Downtown Sacramento Partnership, Visit Sacramento, California State Parks, as well as the owners and merchants of Old Sacramento, and other regional cultural organizations. The Sacramento History Alliance operates the Sacramento History Museum and its programs, which include the Living History Reenactors, and the very popular underground tours. We manage and staff the Sacramento Visitor Center in Old Sacramento, and we support the programs, events, and collections care at the Center for Sacramento History, and if you don't know what that is, that is our treasure chest. At the Center for Sacramento History, it preserves our history through hundreds of thousands of artifacts, documents, photographs, video, and film. All of these programs and facilities inspire and enable people to connect with Sacramento's history, and are essential to the attraction of Old Sacramento waterfront and its historical significance. Each year, the museum welcomes 60,000 visitors, plus another 30,000 who take our tours, and of those, of over 15,000 are schoolchildren from around the region and the state, taking part in educational programs that are engaging, interactive, and meet the common core standards. We also offer up to 24 scholarships a year for Title I schools to take advantage of free school programming, both at the museum or through our educational outreach program, as well as free scholarships for each week of our annual summer camp. In our Visitor Center, we engage over 50,000 people each year, and they come from all over the world. We know that most tourists to the Old Sacramento waterfront come for the history. It is therefore our challenge and our responsibility to engage visitors and provide them with experiences that are both entertaining as well as historically accurate and relevant. The significant historical events that took place in Sacramento and in Old Sacramento, which is a National Historical Landmark District, are profoundly important and relative, relevant to our lives today, not only locally, but statewide, nationally, and even internationally. Since its inception in 2003, with support from our partners, our organization has been chartered with the mission of managing, preserving, and educating the public about the Old Sacramento Historical District, with programs and events that attract local visitors and tourists alike. Which brings me back to the original statement about giving you money. 10 years ago, the city made an investment in us by giving us a loan to produce, manage, and market the underground tours of Old Sacramento. We are now 10 years later, and we have made the last payment, or I have the last payment here, for that loan, to say the, to pay the city in full. Since that time, our guides have given over 7,000 tours to approximately 120,000 people, and each year, our programs increase. We now operate year-round, netting 150 to 200,000 annually, in support of the museum and its exhibits and programs. We want to thank the City of Sacramento for having the confidence to invest in us, to create a long-lasting historical and entertaining attraction for the district, and we are also grateful to the city for the stewardship and guidance we received from our city historian, Marcia Aiman, who has led the development of the museum and the tours for the past 11 years. One partnership that we're very excited about is with a local cultural and artistic organization, Soul Collective, which produces Dia de las Muertas, a community event in Old Sacramento attracting an audience of over 5,000. This coming year, we will expand the event to include the Temporary Companion Exhibit inside the museum. And with our partners, we have, since its inception in 1998, produced Gold Rush Days, and this year, it will morph into the New Waterfront Days on Memorial Weekend. In 2016, the Sacramento History Alliance conducted a master planning process for the museum, and from that planning, we identified our first phase short-term goals to improve the museum to be a greater attraction for the district. The first goal was to remove the unnecessary and obtrusive escalator.
So, I'm sorry, how much, how much longer? This is a great presentation, but we, we have a long meeting tonight.
I'm sorry, I was, I-
Okay, the escalator is good, but-
Yes. Okay. The escalator is gone, and that was the improvement that was 10 years in the making, and we want to take the opportunity to thank Steve Hanson, Councilman Hanson, and his staff for, for making that happen. So, with this project done, we identified three goals that we want to start our fundraising and speak to each of the council members, members about. One is rebranding the museum, second is creating a special changing gallery named for former mayor and philanthropist and history advocate Burnett Miller, and expanding the underground tours to offer programs and tours that meet the needs of a more diverse and international audiences. We're grateful to the City of Sacramento for its continued support of the museum and its programs. It's an exciting time to be a part of both Sacramento's challenges and its opportunities, and we hope that while there are many demands on the city funding, the city continues to recognize the contributions to our community fabric and the return on investment that the museum and its programs have to offer, and we will continue to share the stories and exhibit the artifacts that tell of the city's indomitable spirit. Thank you for your time, and we look forward to talking to you afterwards.
And, thank you for the check, you know, this-
Actually, don't give it to him, Delta.
What do you mean?
I don't want anybody to lose this check.
Give it, give it, yes, give it to the clerk, please.
Thank you very much.
I just wanna say thank you for the history here. We have a unique opportunity here in Sacramento, and some of it'll be outlined Thursday, late afternoon, on the waterfront in Old Sacramento, and next Tuesday at the City Council, to combine the best of our historic Sacramento with a modern version of how to allow people to access this wonderful treasure, the waterfront in Sacramento, and the genius will be in combining the traditional and the historical with the new.
Absolutely.
And, you're obviously a big part of that, so thank you, and the museum's a big part of it.
Thank you. Thank you for your time. You all have fans of some of the characters of that founded our Sacramento city.
Well, thank you for Sheriff.
At your service.
Thank you, sir, and, thank you. Good. Okay, the last resolution today, I'm going to present to our city attorney, I believe, our committee chair here. May 1st is the annual Law Day in Sacramento, and, go ahead, go ahead, and then I'll say a word or two.
I'll be really brief.
Go.
Mayor, members of the City Council. In 1961, Congress declared each May 1st to be recognized as Law Day, a day to reflect on the role of law in the foundation of our country and to recognize its importance for society. And each year, the American Bar Association announces a theme for Law Day. In 2015, Law Day celebrated the 800th anniversary of Magna Carta. 2016 celebrated the 50th anniversary of Miranda versus Arizona. In 2017, Law Day celebrated the 14th Amendment, and last year, with a panel that included Mayor Steinberg, Law Day celebrated the concept of separation of powers inherent in our Constitution and our form of government. And each year since 2010, the city attorney's office has celebrated Law Day through either an open house or a presentation, and we thought that this year's theme is of such importance to our government and to our society that presentation was mandated. This year's theme is Freedom of Speech and Freedom of the Press. So, on May 1st, here in council chambers, to celebrate freedom of speech and freedom of the press, we have enlisted three notable individuals to discuss those issues. Our own Joe Cerulo, from the city attorney's office, will discuss the history of the First Amendment, including its English antecedents. Professor Leslie Jacobs of McGeorge School of Law will discuss current issues under the First Amendment, and Anita Chabarr, a reporter with, with the Los Angeles Times, stationed here in Sacramento, will discuss current issues pertaining to freedom of the press. And with that, Mayor, I believe you have a proclamation.
Mr. Hicks, I do, and thank you for chairing the committee, and that sounds like a very interesting proposal, and always timely.
Yes.
Freedom of the press. You know, I'll just say this, I will admit, I don't always love it when people are angry with me or any of my colleagues about a particular issue. I'm sure glad I live in a country and in a city which not only allows, but encourages people to express themselves in any way, in every way, without fear of retribution from its government, 'cause that is not, that, that is not true everywhere, that's what Law Day celebrates, and it's really important that you do this in Sacramento and around the country every year. So, you guys, thank you. Members, before we get to the agenda today, and we're gonna begin with the consent calendar, where I know some members are abstaining from items, and some members wanna hear a couple items separately, I want to address item 39 right now and see if we might deal with that, because I know there may be a lot of people who are here for that item. Originally, of course, tonight's agenda included the final public hearing on what is called the Tenant Protection and Relief Act. In consultation with my colleagues who authored the proposal, we will be continuing the item, subject to the approval of the council, to June the 25th, with the ability to continue it beyond June 25th, if that is necessary and as necessary. In the intervening months, however long it takes, I know that the council members that brought this proposal forward will be working with stakeholders, with advocates, with the business community to hear their concerns and perspectives, and continue toward the, the vital goal of helping tenants. I want to thank the members, all of you who stepped forward and put real work into this, for engaging on this and coming forward with real suggestions and ideas. It's also important to note why a continuance. The actions contemplated here are not occurring in a vacuum. Part of the authority of a city council of any city in California is dependent on whether the state legislature and the state government chooses to take action on the Costa Hawkins Act, or other issues relating to housing and the issues of rent stabilization. As we speak now, because I know they're in deadline week over in the legislature, glad to be here, there is a robust discussion, discussion happening with a number of bills, actually, on the subject matter, so I think it is appropriate, actually, that we see as a city where those bills are moving, because it might affect how we choose to address the issues here at a local level. So, with that, I say we continue the item to June 25th, 5:00 PM. Again, if I were a betting guy, a guess man, I would say if we're done by June with the real negotiation and a discussion, great, might be continued again beyond the 25th of June, but let's take a motion to continue this to June 25th. Okay? Moved and seconded. And, okay, I know we do have some public testimony. We do have six people. I know Michelle Paraset, who has worked very hard on these sets of issues on behalf of the tenant community and the housing advocacy, had a discussion with Councilmember Hanson's office, and maybe my office as well, about maybe speaking for the group, if that is okay? Maybe? Well, we have six people signed up, so I guess we can, we can call, we can call six, everyone has, everyone has a right to speak, so let's start with Michelle, and then, you know, see what happens, okay? And then we'll vote on the continuance.
Thank you. My first speaker is Michelle Paraset, followed by Michelle is Russell Rawlings, and then Sam Greenup.
Hi, good evening. Michelle Paraset with Public Advocates. We are part of the Housing for Sacramento Coalition. Anyone here in support of rent stabilization and just cause eviction, please stand up if you are able. Awesome. This is our plan. In lieu of everyone coming up to have, have their two minutes, that's kinda how we wanted to do it.
Thank you.
Thank you for giving us this two minutes to address you. We very much appreciate your decision to withdraw the rent mediation proposal this evening. Thank you, thank you, thank you. We ask you tonight to resume negotiations with tenant advocates and stakeholders from the last position we had agreement on from the fall, and to work with us on ways to best achieve rent stabilization and prevent unjust evictions. We look forward to addressing these problems together. You should have before you a poll we've just completed with David Binder. You'll see that there is overwhelming support for rent stabilization and just cause eviction protections. Also, 88% of respondents said it's important for the city council to address this issue. That's a number that shouldn't be ignored, and I know that you're not, and I hope it reinforces your resolve to get something meaningful done for renters. Thank you for your actions tonight, and we look forward to negotiations.
Thank you very much, Michelle.
Russell Rawlings, and then Sam Greenup.
Russell and Sam are passing. Okay, next.
Lazario Cardenas.
Lazario Cardenas, are you gonna pass as well? Or not? Nope, Lazario wants to speak, that's fine. Okay.
Following Lazario is Robert Copeland, and then Tristan Brown.
That's Lazaro.
Lazaro, I apologize.
There's only one quick thing I wanna say around the discourse happening around rent control, just cause eviction, and all this, that really, that really disturbs me, both in the State House and here, and it's this idea that there's two parties, you know, negotiating something, and for me, it's really, on one end, you have communities of color, working class people, single mothers, people on SSI, people who are disabled, who disproportionately are renters. On the other hand, you have wealthier, more affluent, upper middle class, all the way through corporations, who are on the landlord, landlord side, so it just disturbs me that we're seeing as there's some kind of equal playing field going on here, when at the end of the day, renters and tenants are advocating for just basic rights. And so for me, that's, I, I find it disingenuous that we're talking about this equal playing field and these two parties, when it's actually the majority of people trying to have access to dignity in a home. And so that's, I just wanna leave that with you all here today.
Thank you for reminding us. Who is next? Madam Clerk?
Robert Copeland.
Robert.
And then Tristan Brown.
Well, Mayor Steinberg and City Council, I will never agree to his rent mediation bit. Never, 'cause it doesn't work. Other cities have tried it. I was talking to a lady over at the Capitol today, after a hearing I was at, for tenants' rights organizing, she said, it's a, city council's trying to do something without doing something, and I agree. So, it doesn't work. You should be working on real solutions to the housing crisis, like more affordable housing, rent stabilization, just cause eviction. I don't wanna hear nothing more. You should just put this, that rent mediation into the garbage bin. Thank you.
Our final speaker on this item is Tristan Brown.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council members. I'd like to just echo the comments of Ms. Paraset. Thank you.
Thank you, Tristan.
No more speakers.
Okay, so, Councilmember Hanson.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to thank the advocates who are here. I think you've made a very persuasive case that we need to continue to talk, and Michelle, your comments were well-received last week, this week, as well as the other people who spoke, and this is not going to be easy, but we have to do it, and I think everyone knows there's initiative that's qualified for the ballot, but also, we have a council that's looking at ideas, and like the mayor said, we don't know where it's going to go, but I think through these conversations in good faith, and hopefully with the stakeholders, whether, however you wanna characterize them, I, I'm optimistic that we can figure something out, but that being said, I also know that Mr. Jennings, and Mr. Guerra, and myself, when we proposed this, it wasn't to obviate the discussion around rent control, but we've heard you, and you see it that way, and so we wanna continue to talk to you, and I think this is a great opportunity to do that, and Mayor, thank you for continuing your leadership and supporting positive dialogue.
Always. Very good. So, there's been moved and seconded to continue the item. All in favor, please say aye. Aye, opposed, abstain, that is continued again to the 25th, but again, potentially beyond the 25th, depending upon progress. Thank you very much, everybody. Now let us move to the consent calendar, and, thank you all for coming. There's a lot of housing items on the agenda tonight, you might stay and participate in those. Including housing, including housing trust fund, mortgage revenue bonds, all kinds of things. Here we go. Let's, now, we've got some, Madam Clerk, if you'd help me out, please, a little bit on the consent calendar in terms of the abstentions, why don't we begin there?
Thank you. On items 13 and 18, Councilmember Jennings would like to recuse himself from those. Councilmember Warren has comments on 13 and 14, and there needs to be a short presentation on item 37.
On 13 and what? I'm sorry, 13.
On 13 and 14.
For Councilmember Warren, okay.
Correct. Councilmember Jennings is recusing from 14 and 18.
Got it.
I believe we'd like to pull 18 and 37 for a short discussion.
18 and, let me look at 37 here. 37, is that, who's at that request? I know Councilmember Harris wanted to pull-
Yeah, that was-
Wanted to pull 18.
Number 37 is a staff request, they need to make a short presentation.
Okay, so let's do this, then. Let us take the consent calendar, other than, well, let's take the consent calendar that includes, it includes items 13, and includes item 13, but excludes item 14. Oh, wait, I'm sorry, Rick, you wanted, I mean, Alan wanted to talk about 13, never mind. 1 through 12, 15 through 17, 19 through 36, with Rick Jennings abstaining on the matters we just described, so your vote will be?
Recusing.
Oh, he has to leave. Well, not yet. So, he's not, he's not recused yet, because the two items that I did not mention were the two items that you have to recuse yourself on. So, you're okay on the consent calendar, as I've announced it thus far, okay? Very good. There's a second?
Mr. Mayor, you're in-
Yeah.
Mr. Mayor, you're not going to take a vote yet, are you?
This is not on the, the cannabis thing's off.
No, no. There are people here to speak on a couple of items on consent.
On consent, so we will do that first. I apologize, that's right. Okay. Councilmember Geta, did you have a question on the consent?
If there's been a motion in a second, I'll wait till after.
Okay, let's hear the public testimony on items other than 13, 14, 18, and 37, okay? 13, 14, 18, and 37.
Thank you, and I'd like to remind the audience, this meeting is being video streamed and can be viewed live or later on the city's website. Members of the public who wish to address the council should complete a speaker slip, which can be found at the back of the room. Speaker slips need to be turned in to the clerk prior to the beginning of each item. Please fully complete the speaker slip with any name and phonetic clarification and pronoun, preferred pronoun, so that everyone has the opportunity to address the council. Members of the public are asked to observe the rules of decorum. The council rules of procedure outline decorum expected in the chambers and can be found on our website. The copy is in the back of the room and is summarized on the back of the speaker slip. For instance, use of swear words, yelling from the audience, physically threatening conduct, and displays of disrespect are discouraged. The presiding officer will request that a person cease disruptive conduct, and if not immediately stopped, the presiding officer will direct the person to leave the council meeting. Each speaker has two minutes to address the council. Please silence your cell phones or other communication devices and refrain from using flash photography or lights on video equipment. A cordless microphone, assisted listening device, and parking validations are also available from the clerk. I have 18 speakers on the consent calendar, the first four on items number six. Emmeline Rodriguez, Linda Ing, Susan Underwood, and then Paula Lee.
Mayor Steinberg and council members, I'm Emmeline Rodriguez with the Sacramento Ethics Commission, and I'm here as an individual member to express my own personal views. First of all, I'd like to thank you for the opportunity for allowing me to serve on the commission. It does important work and provides a vital function in the public's faith and trust in government. I wanted to speak to the commission's annual report recommendations. These suggestions are based on best practices of ethics commissions throughout the state, and this includes an independent structure consisting of full-time staff reporting directly to the commission, the ability to use a hearing officer, and the ability to issue subpoenas. These are tools described in our annual report recommendations that would create a stronger, more effective oversight body. We on the commission have spent the past year laying down its foundational structure and establishing its policies and procedures. Now that those components are in place, we are ready to go to the next step, and we hope to be out in the community showcasing the commission's work and its mission and offering itself as a resource to the community. Establishing the commission itself is an important first step, and I hope that you agree that there is more work to do and lots of improvements to make. So I hope we could be partners with the council in making this a reality for the citizens of the city, and we welcome any comments, suggestions, or any questions that you may have of us.
The only, thank you for your testimony. I understand your message loud and clear. We've laid the foundation, now let's do something more meaningful with this. Do you have a budget proposal, or could you develop a budget proposal that would help us? Is Kevin Green the right one? But working with Kevin Green to understand exactly what you're talking about in terms of budget resources?
Yes, we can work with Kevin on that, and he'd like to go ahead and do that.
Good, thank you. Thank you again for your service to our city. Oh, we got a couple others. Go ahead.
Our next speaker is Linda Ing.
Hi, Linda.
Hi. Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of the council. I'd like to applaud and thank the city council for your commitment to the critical missions of the Ethics Commission. I am proud to be a contributor and work with my fellow commissioners and staff. Your support and help in outreach is critical. Together, we will engage with the people of Sacramento for them to learn about the commission and educate them the importance of our work in ethics and compliance. Thank you.
Linda, thank you for all you do in our community and for our community. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Susan Underwood.
Hi. Mayor Steinberg, members of the council, I'm here in my individual capacity, not representing the commission, but I am very happy to be an ethics commissioner. It's been an exciting first year, and we've accomplished a lot, even though we haven't heard any cases yet, but we're getting to that stage. We presented you with our annual report, and at the back of the report, there are several commission recommendations that I just quickly want to highlight for you. The first one is that we would really like to have our administrator, Kevin Green, be our full-time employee. Right now, we have to share him with some other city entities, so I guess that's a budgeting issue perhaps, but we would like his full time. We can fill up his time if you'll give him to us. The second thing is that we've asked you to give us subpoena power, because it's really hard to do an investigation of an ethics violation if you don't have the ability to subpoena records. So we've discussed that on page seven of our report, the ways, the possible ways in which you could give us subpoena power. And the third thing is that we would like to have the ability to hire a hearing officer to hold the hearings if it gets to the point where they're either going to be too lengthy or there are too many of them for the commission to hear them all ourselves. We would like to be able to delegate to a hearing officer, and we need your authorization to be able to do that. So I would urge you to read the report and look at the recommendations and, you know, talk to us if you have any questions. And thank you.
Thank you. Again, thank you for your service, and we'll talk to your commission leadership and to Kevin Green and see how we can take the next steps here.
Great, thank you.
Try.
And Paula Lee is the final speaker on item six.
Hello, mayor and council members. Paula Lee, League of Women Voters. It's been about two years, actually, since the ordinance passed that formed the Independent Ethics Commission, and I just wanted to say on behalf of the community, I think I can speak for them and all of the community organizations, the good government groups that were involved in helping form the commission, and most importantly, you, all of you, really helped form this commission. So you just met three of the commissioners, and Commissioner Underwood went through the recommendations with you. We really support all of their recommendations. The league and the signers of our letter that you have believe that the initiatives that they have laid out in their annual report show how clearly they want to get to work, but they need your support. So we're requesting that you show your support by moving very quickly to enact these recommendations, because these are great people. We don't want them getting bored. We really want to use their expertise and support them. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Good, Paula. Councilmember Ashby on this item.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you to the members of the commission that showed up, and to Paula Lee, who was a terrific partner to myself and Shirley Concolino and Patty Bisharat of the former mayor's office when we put this commission together. Mayor, my recommendation would be this, when we wrote this, we wrote it around the same time as the Police Oversight Commission, and we, you know, you have to start somewhere with these bodies. And some of the things that are in that recommendation are in direct conflict with each other, so they are the hearing bodies, so if they want a hearing commissioner, that would change fundamentally the structure of the body, which is okay if that's what they want to do. But my suggestion would be that we ask our city attorney to review the recommendations of the committee and come back to us as a council with which things are possible and plausible. And when we first did this, we lined up with other ethics commissions in other cities similar to our size and scope, and actually took one step beyond what other cities were doing, but really focused a lot on a San Jose model. And Kevin Green was my staff at the time and is the exact right person to help shepherd this to the next phase, but it may be time to change or modify the role and function of that committee. I just would think that Kevin Green would probably need to work with our city attorney to figure out the form and function most appropriate for the bodies. That would be my recommendation on this item. I know it's on for receive and file today, which means we wouldn't be taking action, but I do think it's probably good to come back at some point later with recommendations from the city attorney.
I do think it's a good suggestion. The only thing I might add to it is just this finance and budget piece, too, because whatever the city attorney helps guide us with in terms of how to make it more robust, you know, next week, the budget takes center stage here at City Hall, and there's going to be a lot of discussion and debate about a lot of things. And ethics is, you don't have anything if you don't have ethics, okay? So let's put that out there, and that's true. But we have to, we have to.
Yeah, perhaps we could focus on mid-year of next year, so that there's an opportunity for them to actually meet with the city attorney and talk to her.
That's fine, however long it takes, sure. Okay. Good. So do we have other public testimony on the consent items other than 13, 14, 18, and 37?
I do. The next speaker is Kat Correll on item seven, then Sandra Strong on item nine, then Carly Brannan on 23.
Okay, are the speakers here?
Kat Correll.
Kat Correll? Nope. Next.
So I don't see Kat. Sandra Strong. Carly Brannan on 23.
Is that Ms. Strong here? Right, okay, I think it's, I'm sorry. What item? Item nine.
Sandra Strong is speaking on item nine.
So is this an item that's being spoke to soon?
It's right now. It's up for a vote, right now, ma'am.
Okay, wonderful. So I'm in housing under a continuum of care, and as many of you know that I have an issue with an eviction that's supposed to be dismissed February 11th, went through the courts, and yet I'm still continuing to get threats with verbally and in print on April 10th. It says, "I will make one last offer to you in another attempt to keep you from being evicted." Okay, and so Mr. Mayor Steinberg and Jay Cheniere and Ms. Emily, I dropped off this last week one of my responses to that letter, email. This went USPS mail. Did you receive it? It's stamped.
I'm sure I did. I'm sorry I have not yet had a chance to look at it.
Okay. Well, I was going to offer all the other city council members a copy. I brought seven more copies, because I have brought it to your attention before, and these are eggs that I cannot put my life at stake all in the basket of the city council. So I have many members of parts of Sacramento that are in the midst of this, and there's people present in the midst of this, and I should not have to go through this, because the continuum care housing, I came off the streets of Sacramento after six years, and I was housed under the continuum of care that you, your department is looking at in the agenda number nine, as everyone knows that it's a high need for housing for individuals. But one of the things I wanted to bring to your attention.
Ms. Strong, you only had 10 seconds left. I'm wondering if we might, I don't, try not to cut you off, I know I am, but if we might actually have you meet with our homeless services team from the city, we've heard you now publicly, to see if we might get into some more detail and if there might be an easier-than-not resolution to your problem and see if we might help you.
I would like so. I just want the rats removed, number one, and they want to do number three.
Emily?
Instead of number one.
Emily Halken, our homeless services coordinator, be happy to talk to you right now.
All right.
Okay, Ms. Strong?
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Mayor Steinberg and city council.
Okay, thank you.
Next speaker is Carly Brannan, and then Teri Castañas. Carly is speaking on item 23, and then Teri on 30.
I'm here today to oppose the presence of school resource officers on our school campuses. So SROs were born from school shootings, which unfortunately, because of white supremacy and toxic masculinity, it's become an epidemic in our country. After Columbine, over 10,000 police officers were deployed to be regular fixtures at schools in order to keep children safe. Unfortunately, that is not what's happened. In fact, in the two decades since then, they have not stopped a single school shooting, and in fact, after the Parkland shooting, a judge determined that it was not the duty of the SRO to protect the children. So why are they even there? Instead of keeping children safe, the presence of SROs has only punished children, particularly black children, pushing them into the criminal justice system for regular childhood misbehavior that should certainly not lead to a child having a criminal record, oftentimes behavior related to living in poverty. And that criminalization often comes with brutalization and trauma. The Capitol of Suspensions report shows that Sac City has the highest suspension rate of black boys in the state. 20.7% black boys compared to 5.4% of white boys, 7.6 Latinos, 2.2% of Asian descent. This rate is almost five and a half times higher than the state average. Instead of treating what we deem as misbehavior as a criminal offense, we should be connecting our children to counselors. The American Counselor Association recommends a counselor-student ratio of one counselor to 250 students. According to Sac City's website, they had 36.2 counselors on staff from 2015 to 2016, which is the most recent information I was able to find, which is a ratio of one counselor to 1,187 students. Daryl Steinberg, I see that you're not paying attention again. That is rude, it's inconsiderate, you are not doing your job as the mayor. My time's up.
The following 11 speakers are on item number 30. Teri Castañas, Will Green, then Maria Kelly.
Good afternoon. I don't put on a white shirt and a tie all the time, so I'm happy to be here.
Welcome back, Teri.
Thank you, Daryl. My name is Teri Castañas, and I'm here this afternoon to request a simple and non-controversial parliamentary procedure. Remove agenda item number 30 from your consent calendar and reschedule this item at a later date that will give your constituents a chance and an opportunity to discuss the issues not only with our council member, but with the staff of the city as well. The vault issue at McKinley Park has become so contentious that it's become impossible to have a meaningful dialogue to discuss the issues with our council member and also with the city staff. Item 30 deserves to be vetted in the open and not lumped together with non-controversial items on your consent calendar. So the issue is very simple. Remove item 30, reschedule it, and give your constituents a chance to discuss this with you council members as well as the city staff.
I love you, former council member, but I remember a very lengthy public hearing on the McKinley Vault several months ago, so this is not the first time it's been heard. But thank you.
Thank you. We want that opportunity, Daryl.
Thank you, sir. Okay.
Next speaker is Will Green, then Maria Kelly, then Ellen Cochran.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, fellow council members, thank you for the opportunity to address you. I speak as a citizen of East Sacramento for 37 years and the co-founder of East Sacramento Preservation. Firstly, we ask that tree mitigation be a condition of the approval for the project. First of all, we have concerns with the sewer intake pipe location and its impact on a 32.5-inch American elm on the east side of the picnic area. We're wondering if Impact Urban Forestry looked at scale drawings to determine if excavation will encroach onto this American elm's drip line. If so, adjustments need to be made for the new placement of a sewer intake pipe. This pipe could also be impacting other trees north of the American elm. In fact, we question why the intake pipe is being placed in the proposed location, since this designated location is a densely tree-planted area. Why was this? Why was this area chosen instead of a bit farther south where there are fewer trees in this southern location? There are also about 10 depressions between the baseball diamond and the picnic tables, representing the footprints of stately mature heritage trees, most likely Dutch elms, and why haven't these 10 trees been replaced over the years? We do request that proper treatment of elms of all species in this area be treated with ArborTech 20S. We also request protection against soil compaction by heavy equipment. Trees are stressed and become more susceptible to insects and die when their soil is heavily impacted or compacted, and we know that you love the trees just like we all do. And then finally, in the request of replacement trees...
Your comments, sir, your time is complete.
Time is complete. Thank you, sir. Thank you very much.
I'll leave this written for the record. Please.
The next speaker is Maria Kelly, then Ellen Cochran, then Michael Green.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Maria Nicholas Kelly. The contract to build the sewage vault in beloved McKinley Park will perpetuate the sewage crisis in East Sacramento, not solve it. In a 10-year, six-hour storm, city documents show that 12.4 million gallons of combined sewage would overflow. The vault would hold 5.6 gallons, million gallons of this overflow, leaving 6.8 million gallons of sewage contaminated storm water still in the streets and park, more than stored in the vault. But residents who live in 77% of the city with a separated system are protected from overflow sewage in home streets and parks. We are not. All residents must be provided equal protection from exposure to disease and devastation by keeping raw sewage contained in its own separated pipe in the sewer system. In my view, the combined sewer system is like building infrastructure on sand; the separated sewer system, like building on rock. Ultimately, Mother Nature rules. She doesn't abide by our clocks, calendars, tables, and charts. The crucial disparity remains. Residents in the separated sewer system are not battling the sewage crisis along with Mother Nature's hell and high water from atmospheric rivers, storms growing stronger, lasting longer, more frequently, and ferocious. In closing, I urge you to stop investing millions of dollars in the fatally flawed combined sewer system. Focus our tax dollars on solving the problem that you told the Regional Water Quality Control Board that you could do with the same amount of money and separate the sewer system.
Thank you for your comments. Your time is complete.
It is time to connect East Sacramento to the city's existing separated sewer system.
Thank you for your comments. Next speaker is Ellen Cochran, Michael Green, and then Richard Lee.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. I hope you're all well tonight. Ms. Cuffey, there might be a duplicate card for me, so I just wanted to make you aware of that. So I'm here to talk about the proposed sewer vault, and I am representing East Sacramento Preservation. I'm a board member, and the, what I'm going to state is our official position on it. So many in government are fond of citing the word amenities, but a word that is more important for our future really is infrastructure. But sadly, Sacramento leaders frequently make decisions that focus more on the present than the future. The proposed water vault in McKinley Park is case in point. The proper solution to Sacramento's combined sewer problem is to build a split system along with innovative water capture systems. This is what every city in California does, save San Francisco and us, and San Francisco is working on its problem. We are all aware of how expensive these projects are, but throughout the US, cities are converting to split systems, including many in the Rust Belt and near the Great Lakes, areas that clearly are financially strapped. I'm sure you've all researched split systems, I hope you have. You know that the vault is a patch. You know that Sacramento is growing, and that East Sacramento is using every piece of infill that it has, both within its borders and adjutting its borders. Be brave enough not to kick this can down the road, support solid, well-designed infrastructure projects, and be stewards of the day, today. I am on record that the city of Sacramento should install a split sewer system long after we're gone in this room. Sacramento will look back on the record and read that there were citizens who cared about doing the right thing. There is one comment that I like to say about city leaders, people who lead this government: you are ancestors. Look forward to the future, and what you do today, what kind of ancestor are you going to be considered, and will you be? Thank you.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Michael Green, and then Richard Lee. Michael Green, Richard Lee, then Lucy Schwartz.
Thank you very much. My name is Michael Green. I've lived in East Sacramento on McKinley Boulevard, four blocks east of McKinley Park for 21 years, and have been in the park almost every day for 21 years. I'm here tonight to tell you of my deep, deep disappointment at the city's McKinley Park vault project and the slipshod way that the city agencies have managed it over the last two years. I've been to probably 10 meetings about it, public meetings, and they have all been very poorly run. And I want to express my persistent opposition to this project and the resulting damages to the park. Even as stated in the project's EIR, the vault project will not solve the sewer water flooding problems in the park neighborhood. The EIR says that. And the flooding is caused by the city's reliance on its combined sewer system that has been a subject of public concern and study for almost 50 years. This project continues on that 50-year trend of the city's refusal to bite the bullet on this problem and separate the combined sewer system into two separate systems, one for sewage contaminated fluids and one for surface runoff, as is being done in other places in California and across the country.
Thank you for your comments. Your time is complete.
This project affects only one of the problems, but it doesn't deal with the problem itself.
Our next speaker is Richard Lee, then Lucy Schwartz. Richard Lee?
Mayor Steinberg and council members, my name is Richard Lee, and I'm a resident of Sacramento. If you vote to approve the McKinley Water Vault project, you will be turning historic McKinley Park into a wasteland. In fact, labeling it a water vault project is outright misleading. Let's call it what it is. It's a sewer vault, and it's not the proper solution. This proposed sewer vault will not eliminate flooding in East Sacramento. In fact, it will make things worse. The next time there's flooding in the area, the sewer vault will spill more sewage contaminated water into our streets and, and the park than will be retained by the vault itself, thereby subjecting the community to the health risks of raw sewage. East Sacramento deserves to be properly connected to the city's proven separated sewer and drainage water system, which should cost no more than this fundamentally flawed project. I'm hereby putting you each on notice that knowing the negative consequences that will result from the implementation of the McKinley Sewer Vault project and intentionally deciding to approve its construction will most certainly subject each of you to the legal liabilities of intentional tort law for which there is no statute of limitations. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Lucy Schwartz, then Kim Glasser.
This is a matter that affects the citizens of all of your districts, not just District Three. I, in fact, am from District Six. Historic McKinley Park belongs to all of us and is widely used by residents of all of our city. To place this sewage vault under the ball-diamond, where generations of Sacramentoans have enjoyed softball and baseball, and to replace much of the grassy fields with proposed concrete and blacktop on the 2.4 acres it will cover is environmentally and spiritually negative. Our historic park has enhanced our quality of life for nearly a century. Had it been proposed to be placed under another historic park, say William Land Park's golf course, I would still be here with a different group of neighborhoods. It doesn't address the problem, which is an outdated collapsing infrastructure which will continue to need to be addressed as it's further taxed by addition of more multi-story housing being approved and feeding into this archaic, mixed-use drainage system. The longer it's put off, the more it'll cost each of us. Approving the expenditure doesn't solve the problem and will ultimately increase the taxpayers' costs to upgrade to a needed sound infrastructure for our city. This proposal is being rushed through as a politically expeditious patch. Don't allow another expensive Band-Aid to be approved. You can fix this permanently. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Kim Glasser, then Rick Fayer, and then Melinda Johnston.
Those are the last three speakers on this item.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. My name is Kim Glasser, and I'm here to speak on a number of issues. Firstly, to talk about McKinley Park. McKinley Park is not just any park. It is an icon of Sacramento, and there are very few Sacramentoans who don't know about it or who haven't been there. McKinley Park is over 100 years old and listed on the National and State Registers of Historic Places. There are many features, including the George Buttercole Baseball Field, which speak to the hearts and legacy of Sacramento's history and greater community. It's about the amazing shade trees and the majestic expanse of canopy trees, provide, provided, as noted at the beginning of this meeting today, we all heard it, the importance of those trees. And this is not an issue for those who just live in District Three, it's an issue for each one of you there. It's about preserving the quaint qualities and legacy design of McKinley Park in gender, which attracts the tens of thousands of visitors who frequent the park each year. Each of you have hundreds, if not thousands, of constituents who enjoy the unique aspects of McKinley Park from time to time, so this is an issue for each of you. And this is not just about McKinley Park. This is about the plumbing and sewage system in Sacramento. It's about, it's about an issue for all Sacramentoans. It is not about going backward and perpetuating the combined sewer system, but about stepping into the 21st century and creating what all other forward-thinking cities are creating, which is a separated sewer system. And it's not about going past, it's going, it's about going past the flawed design, temporary fix of an overflow sewage storage tank, and about doing the right thing and creating our own legacy of a lasting solution and split sewer system for Sacramento. We need you to do the right thing, and we need you to do it now. This is the time for you to make your legacy heard.
Our next speaker is Rick Fayer, and Melinda Johnston is the final speaker.
I don't think that two minutes can adequately, one can summarize months and months and months of studying, and I know that you have many issues before you. There's a lot of areas where confusion can occur in trying to understand a complex thing like our water systems and our sewer conveyance. The project would most, first item from, from my notes is that would disrupt one of the best assets that you already have, which is infiltration quickly of storm water into the ground. It's conveyed easily away by the existing groundwater, which is a slough, and so the water has movement. The height, DEIR actually has a lot of confusing elements in it as well. Something caused me to be totally confused about the purpose of the project for many months until I realized the source of the confusion, which was something I considered to be misleading. For instance, the cover shows photograph, which I've determined there are four drain inlets which are part of a fully separated storm drain system, have nothing to do with this project. That's, I consider that to be a serious, kind of, a serious misstatement, and there are other conflicts. For instance, it says that there, there's shallow depth of groundwater in adjacent connection to the American River. That's why they selected the project. And then three sentences later, it says, "The location for this proposed project was chosen due to the high proportion of flooding events efficiency is because of relatively low groundwater table." So they have it, three sentences later, a conflict in whether the groundwater is low or whether it's shallow.
Thank you for your comments. Your time is complete.
And, and my time is complete, and this kind of a discussion was not what you had...
For your comments. The next speaker is Melinda Johnston.
Thank you for, thank you for getting efficiently through this matter, but I want to echo, I want to echo the former council member.
My next speaker is Melinda Johnson.
Finish your comments, dear. Everybody get... Suggested that this item needs more discussion. That is absolutely correct. This would be different.
We hear you, sir. Thank you.
Completely wrong decision to make at this time without learning more.
Thank you.
I learned...
We had a full, we, we had a full public hearing on this many months ago, and Council Member Harris will speak to it in a minute. This is the contract to begin the work. It's not the first time we've heard this. Thank you. Next speaker.
Melinda Johnston is the final speaker on this item and the consent calendar.
Go ahead.
Hi. Oops. How are you all tonight?
Good.
Good?
How are you?
I'm fine, thank you very much. Good evening, Mayor Steinberg and members of the council. My name's Melinda Johnson. I'm a resident of the neighborhood of McKinley Park. I live in very close proximity to the proposed construction site of the McKinley Park Sewer Vault. The proposed vault excavation is 120 feet from my bedroom window. I am extremely concerned that the EIR did not adequately address the environmental impacts on humans of this excavation and subsequent sewer vault construction and operation of the vault. The excavation is the size of two football fields and is proposed to be 30 to 40 feet deep. It is hard to believe that this will not have an impact on nearby citizens' health as well as the conditions of our 100-year-old homes. Many of them brick, within 120 feet of construction and excavation near the activity. The vault excavation sits directly on top of the site of Burn Slough, a massive ancient water body that ran from the American River at Sac State all the way to Snodgrass Slough. Since the Gold Rush era until early to mid-1900s, it was used as a dumping ground for open trench sewage contents, thousands of dead-hooved animals, hospital waste, industrial rates, and general public trash. What's going to be in the air we breathe 24/7 when this miasma is dug up and becomes airborne? Some spores remain viable for decades, if not centuries. We don't want to breathe this stuff, do you? I would like to request that a formal study be completed to address citizens' health, safety, as well as the structural safety as our homes. Citizens on 33rd and 34th Streets are already having their homes inspected in anticipation of the sewer construction and have spoken with, at length with, legal counsel as to how to address the city of Sacramento of the damage which may inevitably occur. Five families on 34th and one on 33rd have felt forced to sell their homes and move away due to the vault.
Your comments, your time is complete. Thank you for your comments. Your time is complete.
One more family on 33rd is contemplating a move.
Ma'am?
Thank you for your comments.
It's two minutes.
Thank you, I'm sorry. I couldn't hear and talk at the same time there. Thank you.
Thank you.
I have no more speakers.
Okay, Council Member Harris, on this item, wanted to make some comments.
Thank you, Mayor. As you alluded to, when we adopted the EIR for this project last October, we had a very lengthy hearing. We debated whether or not a separated sewer system was possible... We debated whether or not a separated sewer system was possible, whether it was affordable, whether it was feasible. We actually looked at all these issues. The EIR addressed the issues that were raised here tonight, and in fact, this project has been litigated. It was taken to a court, and the judge there substantiated that the EIR was fair and good and that the project could pursue, could be pursued. You know, I get it that some people are upset about the McKinley Vault. You know, we've done an awful lot of public outreach about this, many meetings, probably spent more on public outreach on the McKinley Vault than any other utilities project, certainly in my memory. We've given this a good run. We have websites. We've pushed out information via social media. My phone has always been available to all my constituents about this project. There are a certain number of people, many in this room, whose minds simply will not be changed, and that's fair enough. I get it, you don't like the project. But many, many people have implored me to build this because they know it will prevent their basements from flooding with sewage. The Combined Sewer System Improvement Project was adopted by this council in 1995. There was a cease and desist order, and it was determined by the Water Board that if we adopted a series of projects that improved our combined system, that we would not be in violation of our NPDES permit and that this was a satisfactory way to proceed. And we also mentioned at the last meeting that because all the water that goes into the combined system is treated at regional sand, it's actually a much better product that enters the Sacramento River than in a separated sewer system where the storm water gets heavily polluted on the streets of Sacramento. It's not a perfect system, but we already determined that separating would cost billions of dollars, take 20 years, and upset the daily life of the city to a magnitude that nobody would accept. We've been through all those arguments. You know, I don't feel that there's any more that I personally could do to swatch the concerns of the people who spoke tonight. I feel that we've addressed them and addressed them all adequately, and I'm ready to go ahead and build this project because I believe firmly that it's in the best interest of my constituents in East Sacramento. This is one project in a series of projects that will improve our combined sewer system to the point where it's functional indeed, and we simply just don't have the time or the money to separate. It's really not a necessary way to proceed. So, Mr. Mayor, we'll just take this up on the consent vote and move forward. And one last piece. A couple of misstatements were made. The previous council member did support this project. In fact, he worked with our utility staff to determine that McKinley Park was indeed a good area to build the vault. Last thing I want to say is there are three other vaults that are in use currently. They work very well. I offered a tour to all of my constituents to go see these projects now that they're complete. Councilmember Chenier had one built in his district that was on the tour. Unfortunately, the people who spoke tonight did not go on that tour, but the fact of the matter is, our engineers know what they're doing, and that I believe fully that this project will serve the needs of our constituents.
I want to just add one thing because I've heard you loud and clear, I really have, and we've listened very, very closely and carefully to this, and no district or neighborhood in the city has a uniform voice on anything. That's the beauty of the city and the differing opinions. But I know that East Sacramento and McKinley Park specifically have a well-deserved reputation for insisting on fiscal prudence. And I have not heard one speaker who opposes this project talk about the $2 billion cost -- excuse me, the $2 billion cost to separate the sewer and storm drain, what it would take to do this differently. And so I'm sorry. We have to consider that, the impact on our taxpayers and the impact on our ratepayers. And I'm with Councilmember Harris on this. Okay, let's move on now. I know that before we vote on the consent calendar, other than Items 13, 14, 18, and 37, the Councilmember Warren had a question on Item 15. Is that true or not?
Yeah, just a --
Go, because we're going to vote on that in a moment, okay? You have a question on Item 15 as well? Okay.
Okay.
Why don't you go first then?
All right. Well, I just want to, you know, I noticed that we've issued the contract, and I didn't know much about the process, so if there's someone from city staff that could just explain the process and the outreach that was used before we let this contract, just to make sure.
Is the economic development contract, Item 15, Mr. Jasso?
And my understanding is that, you know, a company from out of state got the contract, which is fine, you know. However, you know, we have a lot of local businesses that are looking for opportunities to contract with the city too, so, Mr. Jasso.
Sure. Thank you, Councilmember Michael Jasso, Assistant City Manager. So, the team that we are working with is comprised, and the lead contractor is RW Ventures. The principal, Robert Weisberg, is here today. Many of you may have had the opportunity to meet Mr. Weisberg when he was here, working kind of at the same time on the work that was being done from the Brookings Institution Plan and the forerunner to the Prosperity Plan that's currently being worked on across the region. The reason we selected the team, and in fact, the team, and if you would like, there's an opportunity for him to address it, does have kind of local partners. So Mig is part of kind of the partnering. He's also partnering with some other contractors here in the state of California. They've been very actively involved with the Prosperity Plan and will be continuing with the Prosperity Plan under the auspices of GSAC, Valley Vision, Metro Chamber, among others, so there's large, broad coordination. I think there was some very unique expertise that was coming to the table. One, in his role kind of in RW Ventures, Mr. Weisberg is also kind of a Brookings Institution kind of senior fellow, has worked across the nation on putting together kind of economic development plans. Furthermore, because of the earlier work and involvement in the Sacramento economy, we thought there was good alignment that could be achieved. So we were very interested in bringing together a team that had experience in Sacramento, had experience on a national level, kind of also could bring together kind of other partners into the mix. So we thought it was a very good team to try to kind of foster the work we're doing moving forward.
And I'm not questioning qualifications or any of that. I was just really interested in the process to make sure that we dug deep in Sacramento as best we could to try to bring the kind of contracting opportunities and to make sure that, you know, local folks here had an opportunity to compete for the job. So, I mean, was this a traditional application process where it was noticed, you had respondents, and then there was some process to select this particular team?
It was not. It was done as a sole source, and it's being done as a sole source. And the major reason is, once again, we were trying to make sure that we had kind of the expertise in. We were very deliberate in the conversations, though, to ensure that he would bring in local partners in that process. And Bob can speak a little bit to that, but I can also --
All right. Well, I just, I think there is some concern that, you know, particularly when we're sole sourcing companies out of state, that, you know, when there potentially expertise here, you know, I mean, I was unaware that it was taking place, and I'm unaware if sole-source contracts are, if this is a pattern or if this is, you know, a very unique situation because, you know, and I'm not blaming or, you know, suggesting that anything, you know, underhanded took place, but, you know, I know when you have relationships, it's important. You know somebody who can do something, but we also have to be mindful, this is a public process, it's a public body, these are public dollars, and we want to make sure that people in Sacramento get maximum benefit for the opportunity, so.
So it is not a pattern, nor it would be my intent in economic development or certainly with us under the city manager's office, that this would be a pattern kind of of norm. I do think that this is a rather unique contract in the sense of the work that's being done. Furthermore, we also thought it was very important that the work be built on the work that was already done prior, kind of which was done and also in alignment with the work that's being done across kind of the region through the Prosperity Plan that's being worked on on the larger regional basis. So we felt the alignment was very important. My general kind of modus operandi is, in fact, that these kinds of contracts should be awarded or generally should be preferred on a competitive basis. We do think this was unique in terms of experience, in terms of prior work, but also the national perspective was critically important, we believe, and we believe that the work moving forward here in kind of creating our economic development plan does need to be kind of prefaced on a best national practices expertise, and we did believe that that was kind of a unique aspect that we wanted to make sure we brought to the table.
So, last question for me. So, was this a, in terms of making the decision, was it you, was it more than you that had a chance to say, "This is what we wanted to do"? How did the decision actually get made?
So in terms of it, we did have conversations early on with our other partners across the region on the Prosperity Plan, such as Greater Sacramento Economic Council, kind of the work of Valley Vision, the work that was being done kind of by the Metro Chamber, and I think there was a concurrence of agreement that this team kind of that was being put forward. We heard the concerns that were, or at least the observation that was raised early on, that we in fact make sure that there was local contact, and actually specifically California context, that was brought to the table here. So it was, but I will, I have worked with RW Ventures in the past, kind of in Chicago and in Cook County, most specifically. They do have a national reputation, as I mentioned. They've been very involved in work kind of at the Brookings Institution level. So given all of that and also given the speed under which we wanted to make sure that we could address this simultaneously to the work we're doing in terms of both kind of moving forward in terms of resourcing economic development and being able to deploy it in a way that can be substantively informative to the work that the Measure U Committee will be taking on, that the to-be-announced investment committee was taking on, was important in terms of timing as well.
No, I get it, but just in terms of who made the decision, was it one person, multiple people? How did the decision get made?
So I would say ultimately, the decision kind of was made in the city manager's office. It was a recommendation by me to kind of city manager Chan, so I would take responsibility for that.
All right. And I just want to note, though, too, because, you know, us being elected officials in public office, you know, it's not, you know, would not be viewed from us if we were to personally hand-select people to do things without, particularly when, you know, I mean, I know the city manager has discretion up to 100,000, or maybe it's a little bit more now. Yeah, and this contract is over that, and there was no public process, and if any of us were to start handpicking who we wanted to do certain jobs, then, you know, this would, I mean, we would have chaos around the city. And so I think it's very important, though, that we make sure that these opportunities are afforded in the process that we've structured as a city. And, you know, Sacramentoans really have to be at the table. They have to be at the forefront. You're going to hear, I think, all of us say, you know, as it relates to the soccer stadium, the arena basketball stadium, all of these contracts, you know, are really of benefit for a variety of reasons, but one of them that really enhances the public's opportunity to participate, you know, the Sacramento public, and we want to maintain that in all that we do. So I'm not suggesting the company somehow is not qualified. It sounds like they're ultra-qualified, you know, and it sounds like it could be a very good, it could be a very good choice, but I just think it's important that the process for selecting them needs to be consistent. Unless there, I mean, if there was no one in our region, city, who could do the kind of work, then I can understand that, but if there was no process, it's hard for us to really know that. And so I think it's important, though, that we don't make a habit out of this kind of selection process, so.
First of all, and I just, your point is very good. Your point is very well-taken, Councilmember, and I want to take some heat for this, if you will, if there's a criticism, because in part, I've been pushing the city management at, you know, to get going on the inclusive economic development front, and so to that...
And I want to get going, too.
No, I know you do, but sometimes it, there is a point of tension, because you raise a very fair point, right, in terms of the process, if you will, versus getting going quickly. And I'm the one that's been pushing, Mr. Jasso, and Mr. Chan, and others, to get going on this. I just want to deflect some of it to me if there's a concern here.
Well, and also, at the end of the day, I did make the decision. The recommendation was made to me. It is not the norm for us to do sole source, and there have to be certain criteria met, you know, the timing is one. We wanted to make sure we had this in place for the Measure U Advisory Committee, and so, yeah, as I mentioned, I made the final call, so Mr. Jasso made the recommendation to me.
But I get it, then. Well, so then my comment would be to all three of you, is that the process should be consistent, and it should not be handpicking people irrespective of whatever urgency there might be perceived, particularly when it's not known by us and the public. And so I'm, it just would concern me if this was a pattern.
I get it.
Right.
No, it can't be a pattern, but this was purposeful in the sense that we're trying to get going here, so I'm going to, that's okay. Before we turn it over to Councilmember Gueda, I kind of read the council here a little bit. We've been here since 2:00 on a workshop. There are three, and I know there's a lot of folks from SHRA who've also been here for a long day and stayed beyond 5:00, but I'm looking at Items 40 through 42. These are thick items. They're important items. They're our housing strategy here, and I might suggest that we put them over for an afternoon workshop here so that we can really have the energy, if you will, to dive into these sets of issues as opposed to, I know what's going to happen. People are kind of tired, and I'm sorry. I know you're all, you're all sitting there. You guys okay with that?
Mayor, the only thing is, I don't know if on Item 40, whether there's a deadline to submit the grant application.
Is there a deadline on the No Place Like Home?
We're fine.
You're okay for a couple of weeks? Okay? So I'm going to interrupt this consent proceeding.
Mr. Mayor, no, because I, I mean, I've been on the speakers list on this item for a long time, so if...
I'm going to get right to you.
Okay, good.
I'm going right to you, right after this. I just want to move these items off so we kind of clear the -- you want to go first?
Whatever way is fine, but whatever you think is going to be fine. I just want to make sure that I make a comment on this.
You're going to get hurt in just a second. I need a motion to continue Items 40 through 42.
Well, hold on. Point of order, Mr. Mayor, we still have a motion on the table.
We do have a motion on the table. Okay, so we'll hold off on my 40 through 42. Let's finish this piece of it first. Councilmember Gueda, you're right, let's finish with the remainder of the consent.
Long day, I'm sorry for being punchy here.
Go, go.
But I've been, so this is, and this is an issue that I, that came about from our meeting with Aggie Square at the Free Ridge Community Center and a concern about this contract. And I want to thank our Assistant City Manager and their team for sitting down with me about this specifically because I had a concern about, particularly not so much also going out and contracting, but my bigger concern on this consistent contracting out for economic development. I understand that we don't have the capacity to achieve what we want now in our economic development team, and that your staff is working on a lot of projects, and so we need something now to help us move to that next level. I appreciate that conversation to have it, but if we're truly going to make a change in economic development for the long run, I don't want to see what happened again where we spent $2 million on consulting for the downtown project and then we lose that intellectual capacity. I want to figure out, when you come back to us with the economic development plan, that we're actually creating our own intellectual talent that stays here. I'm sure the folks from Chicago are well-versed and whatnot, but they'll come in and do their part, and once that contract is over, they're gone. So we may benefit from the immediate need that we have now, but I want to make sure that we're building our own intellectual capacity so that when we solve something or move something, particularly on Stockton Boulevard, and we were talking about how to deal with all the economic development stuff there, that we have the staff that's learned from that experience, who can translate that to Del Paso Boulevard, to Franklin Boulevard, all the other corridor projects that we're working on. So my point on that is more to the city manager, is I want to make sure that we're developing our own center of institutional research for that piece, and that we not continue to go out and, because, you know, I don't know how many contracts our, my constituents have gone and met with and consultants on Stockton Boulevard.
Point taken, and you will see that reflected in the proposed budget that's upcoming.
Okay. It's a good discussion. Larry, Councilmember Carr, on this point?
On this point?
Okay.
Councilmember Warren brings up a very good point, and it's kind of disturbing to me that we don't have the rationale for selecting this contractor. But an additional issue is, are we using the priority neighborhoods to help build this contract? I think the council policy is any contract over $1 million, we would direct employment to those areas that have been underserved. And especially when we have a sole source, we should really be able to bring a lot of employment out of that.
Councilmember Carr, this, this contract is for, we're transferring $500,000, so it falls below that threshold. And again, as I mentioned earlier, this is not the norm for us to do the sole source, but because the consulting team we're bringing on board builds on the work from Project Prosper, and we're looking to provide this, the starting of this plan in conjunction with the Measure U Advisory Committee being formed, and that's why we move forward in such fashion where we're sole sourcing.
So, this is further specifications. When we actually do the construction contract, that's when we will have it? Is that what you're saying?
No, no, no. This is, I'm giving you the rationale about why we ended up sole sourcing this contract. We have the occasion to do that, not just with economic development, with all the other departments, but it's not the norm, I guess is my point. When we bring forward, the reason we're bringing this contract forward is that I only have authority for up to $100,000 in the contract, so it's coming before the board as a recommendation.
Are we hiring people from underserved neighborhoods for this?
I'm going to turn to Mr. Jasso about the consulting team that's being put together under this contract.
The, I do not believe there are specifically underserved individuals being, this is a professional services contract. There are local, kind of, some participants that are being, as part of the contract team, in terms of consultant team, but I couldn't specifically speak to any of those individuals working for those contractors, coming from underserved communities.
There is a timing issue here. I just want to help, if I can, here a little bit. We're going to begin considering a budget. There's going to be areas of agreement and disagreement between the management and the council undoubtedly, but one area of agreement is going to be, I'm not giving away any secrets here, is that the city manager's commitment to actually helping us build up a full-time economic development staff. Within that context, it's going to be our opportunity and our obligation to make sure that we hire a diverse staff that is reflective of the diversity of our community geographically and otherwise. This contract is, and by the way, once that authorization is in place, once we pass a budget presumably in the middle of June, it will undoubtedly take six months to fill those positions, when all is said and done. In the meantime, it's April of 2019. We have our investment committee about to meet, our Measure U Advisory Committee about to meet, a lot of expectation about the development of an economic development plan. And so, this contract is to enable the person that the city manager brought from Chicago to have the capacity here to not have to wait literally another six to nine to 12 months to be able to get started on what we want them all to do. So, this is a timing issue, and that's why it's a little bit of an extraordinary circumstance. But during this budget, we will be debating adding to our full-time equivalent employees, if you will, in the Economic Development Department, so that we bring this, a lot of this function in-house. Timing, okay?
It really didn't address my question. This contract is to construct a concrete vault, temporary storage, combine wastewater runoff.
What?
Which one is it?
You're talking about a different item?
Okay. I apologize. Wrong item.
Okay, members, here's what, what do you have, Councilmember Ashby?
Mayor, I just, I don't want to belabor the point, but I do want to say that I agree with Councilmember Warren, that it's frustrating to have an inclusive economic development company come in and not be inclusive from our city. And so, I understand you worked with them in Chicago, and that, and that they have done some work here before. I just wanted to ask the city attorney, my understanding, and, you know, is that when we sole source, we have to meet certain findings. There has to be certain findings in order for us to be able to sole source. Is that right, city attorney?
Typically, yes. When it's professional services, though, there's more discretion provided to be able to go with a sole source versus a public works project or acquisition of goods.
So, city manager Chan, did we meet the sole source requirements for a professional services contract decision?
Yes, we have. I mean, we've routed this through, we have a 19-day review period that goes through all city staff, goes through the attorney's office, goes through, you know, a series of reviews to look at these things. So, before we bring a sole source forward, it has to meet those criteria.
But isn't there, there's like a checklist of things that have to be done before you can do a sole source? Did we?
Well, like the city attorney said, it's a little different with the professional services agreement than it is with like a construction project bid. So, in this instance, yes.
Okay. I'm just feeling a little like we should have that in our report, and that there should be like a layout of why we did the sole source, and the rules for the city, and that they were adhered to. And so, that is feeling a little awkward to me right now.
So, a couple of things, council members. First, I do want to address the issue, although RW Ventures is based out of Chicago, their portfolio is national, so I do want to stress that. So, they just physically are there, but they have worked across the country. Two, they do have local partners, and they can speak a little bit to that partnership, that were always intended and part of the mix, kind of with respect to the team they've brought together. Third, if, I'm going to ask Melissa Anguina to speak specifically to the sole source rationale, in terms of the documents that were submitted and so on. But fourth, one of the big pieces on the sole source rationale is because they are also working on the Prosperity Plan, kind of at the broader kind of regional level, and much of that work overlaps. There was cost savings that could be achieved through this kind of contract. So, those were all parts of the rationale on it. So, I'm going to ask Melissa to speak a little bit to sole source rationale. I'd encourage the council, if they would like to hear from the team itself, to take advantage of that particularly.
How much do members want to get into the depth of this? We've got a long agenda here. Are you satisfied or not?
I don't think that, I would just...
Come on, no, no. Go ahead.
My question is legal, so I...
Did they meet the sole, Madam City Attorney, did they meet the sole source criteria or not?
I apologize. I was trying to get to the municipal code section provision quick enough. And the sole source provision comes into play when you have non-professional services or goods and supplies. This is professional services, and so the sole source provisions, justification would not apply in this case.
They don't apply, okay.
They don't apply, but we still will need to fill out a sole source.
They still don't, they don't apply, but you still need to figure out, fill out a sole source form. Are you guys, are you ready for a vote on this, or are we going to continue to beat this contract to death here?
Let me just be quick, Mayor. You know, and I didn't mean for this to go on...
Turn on your mic.
I didn't mean for this to go on this long. I'm prepared to vote for the contract, okay? But I think it's important that we learn from this discussion and this situation that you understand what the priorities of are for this council. And irrespective of time, because I don't want that to be the excuse, that we don't have enough time to do these things. We're letting out hundreds of thousands and millions of dollars of contracts. We want as much of that to stay here in Sacramento as possible, okay?
And we concur with that.
All right, very good.
Okay.
So, I'm prepared, I'm prepared to vote for it.
Okay. We have the consent calendar. We've got the consent calendar, other than items 13, 14, 18, and 37. Who moved the original consent calendar an hour and a half ago?
I did.
Okay?
I did, but you have to speak on 13 and 14.
We're going to get to that. We haven't gotten to that. We're getting to 13, 14. This is the rest of it, okay? Moved by Councilmember Hanson, and it was seconded by who?
I'll second it.
Okay, by Councilman Chenier. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. You're good. Opposed? Abstain. That passes nine to nothing. Okay, now.
Thank you.
Before we go any farther, now that we've dispensed with that motion, I would like to take a motion to continue on items 40 through 42.
I'll move second.
Moved and seconded. All in, is anybody here to testify on items 40 through 42?
No, we don't.
No. Who is it?
Ansel Landsberg from Housing Sacramento.
Is Ansel Landsberg here from Housing Sacramento? Lundberg, are you here? Okay, we're going to continue this item. Do you want to be heard tonight?
Sure. So, Mr. Mayor, council members, just wanted to comment real quick on item number 40. My name is Ansel Lundberg from Housing Sacramento. We are a pro-housing group in Sacramento, and we support the menu of options that city staff have prepared. We think it's a great setup, and we really are glad that you're in the position to be able to apply for this grant from the state. And we, there's a lot of great items in there, and so we just wish the best for staff to pursue these items. And thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor, one quick point. Mr. Lundberg, like Erica and I, moved to Sacramento to be a fellow, and he knows a lot about rice. So, if you ever want to know about rice and your farm-to-fork movement, Ansel Lundberg is your guy.
You're the guy. Housing and Rice. Thank you very much, Ansel. Thank you.
Another meeting. Thank you.
Okay. This needs to be continued to a date that still leaves us able to comment on the deadline for "No Place Like Home," so that we understand all that, okay? Thank you to staff for your patience, and sorry for keeping you longer than necessary. All in favor, please say aye. Aye. Opposed? Abstain. Okay. Now, before we get to the cannabis item, we're going to ask Councilmember Jennings to leave, because we've got items 13, 14, and 18 left, of which you are... Just 14 and 18. So, Councilmember Warren, you want to comment on items 13 and 14, so that we can call for votes on those two items?
Be very brief, Mr. Mayor, and thank you once again. I just wanted to thank city staff, Veronica Smith, for item 13 and being diligent, and helping to move what I believe to be an iconic part of North Sacramento and in the Del Paso Heights community, to move some economic development activity forward. And also, I want to likewise thank Cassandra Jennings for her leadership, as well as her commitment to investing dollars in that particular corridor of the Boulevard. I think both projects could be transformational. And so, we're looking forward to working with both Cassandra, and Kevin, and Veronica on these projects, to really make the kind of investment that will be foundational building in North Sacramento and in the Del Paso Heights community. So, thank you for staying with it. Look forward to working with you going forward.
Okay, what about, and did you...
That was both, 13 and 14.
On both, 13 and 14. Okay, let's, Councilmember Jennings left. He's absent, whatever. Move items 13 and 14. Moved and seconded. All in favor, please say aye. Aye. Opposed? Abstain. That passes. Let's move now to cannabis item 18. Councilmember Harris.
Mr. Mayor, I have some reservations about this item. When we last took it up, Mr. Chenier suggested that we double the amount of the contracts and bring in a second provider. Not only is that rather unusual, but, you know, I look back to other programs that we've instituted, like the Gang Prevention Intervention Task Force. We seeded that with something like $500,000, and year over year, as the project proved itself, we added more money to it. To put $2 million into a program that we don't know what shape it will take, you know, frankly, it exceeds my appetite. I was okay with going with $1 million for this, and I understand that we have two good providers, in the Asian Chamber and the Sacramento Urban League. I would suggest that we do this, that we do a one-year contract at $500,000 each, do a yearly review at the end, and let's make sure that this is actually achieving the purpose which we intend, and serving the community. I mean, I fully get that what we're trying to do is heal a past wound, about people who were disproportionately affected by the war on drugs. It's a noble cause, and maybe we can get there. But I would say this, the core program in Oakland did not work well. Now, ours is not analogous to that, and I think we can do a much better job here and move in a different focus that way. Additionally, Mr. Chenier, when you brought this up, we talked about the money that would be available via state grant for core programs within a year's time. Mr. Devlin has said that it could be 800,000, it could be more, and you said at that time that we would use that money first, before we dipped into the general fund to meet this extra $1 million. That's not a bad idea, and I think that we should use state grant money, but that's not reflected in the staff report. So, what the staff report says, we'll use BOT tax in a multi-year operating project over two years. So, at this point, I'm not in favor of this. Additionally, you know, in a year's time, we will have implemented the Measure U Committee, who could also review this program, and pass judgment on whether or not it's the right program to serve the need that we have indicated that it would serve. So, that's where I'm at with this. I, this may not be a very popular opinion on this particular item, but, you know, $1 million. We allocated $1 million to serve homeless women and children, and here we're looking at $2 million to do the core program, after we had really labored to agree to do it at $1 million. So, if this moves forward as written, I will certainly not be in favor. At this point, I don't think I can make a motion to change it substantially. It would have to come back with what I suggested. Is that correct?
But you can make a motion, because it's in front of you to...
Well, I would do that, then, and see if I get a second. But my motion, my motion would be to bring it back and make a $500,000 contract to each the Asian Chamber and the Urban League for one year, have the program reviewed in one year, apply for the state grants, and assuming we receive that money to apply it, assuming that we want to renew the contracts with both providers for the second year. So, that's my motion.
Thank you, Mr. Councilmember Harris. Councilmember Chenier?
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Mr. Devlin, can I just ask you the status on the application for the grant, or where we are on that?
Thank you. Mr. Vice Mayor, city manager, members of the council, Joe Devlin with the Office of Cannabis Policy and Enforcement. The state released their equity grant. We did submit a proposal along with a number of other cities. They subsequently pulled the grant back. I do expect that they will release it this year. There was a condition in the initial grant proposal that those dollars had to be used within, within a year. Not sure if that will be included in the subsequent release, given the shorter timeframe, but I do expect them to re-release the dollars this year.
So, let me ask our city attorney, when she gets settled, for a second here. So, I think two things. One, first, just on content of this, we worked very hard on this with many, many stakeholders over a long period of time. My belief on this, and one of the reasons we tried to increase the funds over a two-year period versus doing a one-year, which I think was the original staff recommendation, is just the startup time to build the infrastructure to do this correctly is going to take more than 12 months. And, you know, given the fact that, or given that we have talked a lot about equity in cannabis, it seems to me that providing enough funding to do two years of this to really see if it works, and if this works, this will pay off for us back into our general fund by having additional operators working in this industry. I think this is, and my understanding as well, and I haven't checked on this in the last, since we did this last time, was that there is sufficient dollars in what we will get through BOT this year above what was budgeted, so that this will not impact our overall general fund. What I'd like to do, the city attorney, if we can do this, is move the staff recommendation as a substitute motion with the provision that if state dollars become available through this grant, that they would substitute for an equal amount of BOT or general fund money going into this. Is there any problem doing that?
I think there was a budget...
Madam City Attorney?
Does that make sense?
It makes sense to me. I believe that there was a discussion on this item, and there was a budget issue with that as far as being able to account for the money now.
I don't know what the budget issue is.
We can write the terms of the agreement in any way that you want us to write.
Mr. City Manager, is that something we can... I don't know what the problem is. I understand that the state pulled back the grant. We'll have to reapply, I assume. We don't know the exact parameters of the grant, but what I would suggest is that any funds that come out of this grant be substituted dollar for dollar from general fund money that we might be okaying tonight. that we might be okaying tonight.
Mr. City Manager.
Right, so I don't know that there's any restrictions from that that I'm aware of, but we can revisit that. But the substituting the grant funds is not going to be the issue. The issue is more likely that if we don't get the grant and the dollars are expended already.
Right, so we don't know. Hopefully we'll understand. Well, you have two years. Could be in year two of this.
Correct.
As well. So if, so I guess my substitute motion is move the staff recommendation, adding a provision that if dollars become available through the state through the grant that Mr. Devlin has identified, that those grant funds, if appropriate or if legal, will replace BOT dollar for dollar whenever that is under the parameters specified by the state. So that's my substitute motion.
Okay, members, we have a substitute motion that is moving the staff recommendations with a provision that says that any grant dollars from the state be allocated dollar for dollar first before any general fund allocation dollars.
Or it may not be before any general fund, it may be whenever it's appropriate to do that, timing wise.
Okay. We have a substitute motion here that would move the staff recommendation with a provision to allow the state grant dollars to be allocated in place of whatever appropriate funds to meet the motion of the $2 million of the staff recommendation. Is there a second to the substitute motion?
Second.
Been seconded by the mayor? Okay, so members, is there...
Comments before the vote?
Yes, we do. And I, on the speaker's list, I have Member Ashby and then Harris. So we'll go to Councilmember Ashby.
Let me just say this, and I just want the substitute... I just want the substitute restated for clarity too.
The substitute motion is that we approve the staff recommendation. The staff recommendation is $2 million over two years, 1 million to each of the organizations that we're contracting with. With a provision that if state dollars become available through the grant that Mr. Devlin has identified, that any dollars we get out of that grant replace dollar for dollar the BOT, part of the $2 million. So if we win eight hun, if we win a grant for 800,000 and the timing is appropriate, at some point that replaces 800,000 of BOT general fund money.
Councilmember Warren, did that clarify your question?
Yeah, for me, yeah.
Okay, good. We have a...
Basically, I'm sorry. So basically, we're guaranteeing 2 million over two years. The source of funding may change slightly depending on winning a grant.
Councilmember Hanson, I'm going to keep you on the speaker's list if it's a clarifying question. I'm going to go to Councilmember Ashby and then Harris was punched up before I accidentally deleted him. So I'll go with Councilmember Ashby, Harris, and we'll go to...
Thank you, Vice Mayor Guerra. So, um, I'm sorry that it's a substitute motion because I would have rather taken Jeff's motion first because I potentially could have supported that after his, but I think the issue here is that in your motion, if we never get the funds, then it just still comes from this same funding source, correct?
That's correct.
Right. So that's harder for me to support as the substitute than it would be as following the substitute. Councilmember Harris's point is a solid one. Somehow this contract, this RFP, got away from us and now, you know, we've added a million dollars and we spent five hours this afternoon listening to the mayor basically cringe because he would take 1 million, what you would do with 1 million dollars in that homeless fund. That is literally the amount of money we have put towards women and children and we could double it. We could double what we're doing for homeless women and children or we can do these two core grants. Or we could do one year at half a million each to give them a chance to see how things go and then renew. And at that time, we would then know if we had the state funding or we'd be more likely to know if we had the state funding. So I just think 1 million dollars is a lot, really a lot, especially right now for us when we're scraping together every dollar to try to do these big things. So I'm going to support Councilmember Harris's motion, which is to give each of the entities half a million and a year, and then if they do a great job, we come back and we reevaluate and we do it again. And I think that's worth it. I think it's prudent. I think it gives the entities a chance to really show us that they can do it and that Sacramento can do better than Oakland has done, which is our, the city we're sort of modeling here but trying to do better than. And there's nothing precluding us from coming back in a year and re-awarding or re-upping these two entities and at that time, making sure we have the grant funding from the state so that this isn't coming from the same general fund pot for which we haven't even discussed our council priorities yet. We have this budget moving forward. We're trying to do these big things with homelessness. We're going to hear about the riverfront next week. There's not enough money to do all the things in the riverfront. So I'm going to support Jeff, but I also just want to encourage my colleagues to really think about this because a million dollars is a lot and we're not saying no. We'd still be giving half a million dollars to each entity for a year and it is a trial run. Thank you, Vice Mayor.
Thank you very much. Now we have Councilmember Harris.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. You know, there are a couple of things that are unusual about this. One is I don't recall when we ever put out a request for proposals and then because we liked two providers who made a pitch for the money, said, "Okay, we'll double the program and hire them both." I don't believe that's ever happened before. But what is concerning to me is although, Jay, I really laud the work that you've done on this and I don't want to step on that, there's been no public discussion about how doubling the money would be advantageous. I mean, and we're also circumventing Budget Audit Committee where we could vet this and talk it out. I mean, you haven't had a chance to speak publicly or privately and convince me that this is a good idea. So I would also like to have time for the Measure U Committee to look at this and weigh in as we look at what we're going to do with the extra half cent as we move forward.
These aren't Measure U dollars though. These are not Measure U dollars.
I get it. They're general fund dollars. Measure U dollars are also general fund dollars. So that's where I'm at with it. I believe that both of the organizations are able and wonderful and I hope you don't feel slighted by my concerns here, but literally, you know, when I look at the Gang Prevention Intervention Task Force, we gave grants to many entities with that cash and money, but we started at a half million dollars, reassessed after a year, and in fact, we do that with many programs where we're not certain about the outcome. I think the fiscally prudent thing to do is to support my motion.
Thank you, Mr. Councilmember Harris. I've got the mayor.
The mayor in the vice mayor's chair here. So, first of all, I understand Councilmember Harris's issue here and respect it. I think there are, you know, a couple of things that mitigate in favor of supporting the substitute motion. Number one, we have been focusing on some early economic development wins and economic equity wins and I think this is under that category. This is, we've made a decision to enter into the legal cannabis business, regulated and taxed, and there is a huge issue nationally and in this state around equity when it comes to cannabis. In some ways, we had a unfortunate thing happen and in some ways, a fortunate thing happen. We have two important constituencies representing different ethnic and racial diversity elements in our community that both competed very hard for this. And we, I thought, and I know Councilmember Chenier thought, that rather than choose one over the other, that we ought to actually support both, the African-American chamber and Bill Black and that coalition and the Asian Pacific Islander community in the chamber as well, with the Latino chamber. And this is, and the other piece of this, there is a policy reason to support two years' worth of funding, which is really what we're doing here, is that it allows these entities to get up and running with the knowledge that they're going to have a second year of funding because it's going to take undoubtedly two years to get the components of the core program actually implemented in the community in a way that is going to be effective. So I think that there's a reason to do two years' worth of funding. There is a reason to support two core constituencies, no pun intended, and to see this as another early win, if you will, under the umbrella of economic equity and inclusive economic development. So I support it.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I've got Councilmember Hanson, then Councilmember Chenier. Councilmember Hanson.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Mayor. Thank you, Mayor. Since you're here. I, you know, I think that the substance in the end is the right thing to do. I do worry about all of these, all of the things that skip the budget process and they don't happen that often, but my friend and dear colleague of now seven years, Mr. Chenier, in one of the, my first year here created something called the Chenier Rule, which is the 10-day notice period, which is being waived here and we're skipping budget audit and I don't want to be slavish to process, so I'll probably support the underlying motion. Huh? It's over a million dollars. Last time we had it, it was under a million?
No, I understand, but it's been, it's been up. Mr. Devlin?
No, I know, but I don't think it was noticed on the last council meeting agenda.
Contract is not...
Let's have a little order here. We'll go with, we'll go staff response on this question?
The contract is not over a million dollars and so it is, it is for 1 million dollars exactly and so that was the ruling that we got, that it did not require the additional 10-day notice requirement because it was not over 1 million dollars.
So the rule is that if it's over 1 million dollars by assent, then it's 10 days, but if it's exactly 1 million dollars, it is not? I mean, you worked for the council member at the time, so you are either guilty or innocent of creating this...
He had nothing to do with it. He's totally innocent.
So the answer... Actually, Mayor, this was Craig Powell's rule that Jay adopted.
It was me working with him in Sacramento, so like mark that down as his score.
So I, you know, and in the end here, like the substance should prevail, but it's a lot of money and I know we've been here a long time, but I do think this is an atypical process that should be avoided, is my point, and I'll support whatever motion can get enough votes to get us out of here. Because we do need six votes to leave and actually return to the normal world, which is not inside this chamber. But I do, when this came up last time, we said the same thing. It should follow the budget process and it should follow some of our normal procedures and it didn't, we are waiving those things, so it's a two-thirds, which we have the right to do, but I just, Mr. Chenier, your budget orthodoxy has little cracks in it.
Yes.
Thank you, Councilmember Hanson. We're going to go to Councilmember Chenier.
So two things on that. I mean, one is, and Ms. Ashby said this and it's correct, this has taken an awful long time and it's something that we made a commitment to and I think this council made a commitment to quite a while ago. So on the kind of policy side and kind of on the moral side, we need to get this done and I understand that it's slightly outside the budget realm. We have done many things slightly outside the budget realm, so this is not that unique. But as a businessperson and I know that we have our folks here tonight, it's, I said this and Daryl said this and I want to reiterate it, to build the infrastructure to do this right, we're making an investment in a number of communities and an investment in building capacity in a couple of organizations. That's really important as we move down this equity trail. This is not trying to emulate anything that Oakland is doing. I think we are far better than what Oakland has done and I think we have a very, very high chance of success on this. And it is an investment because there is a payoff. We do this well, we do this right and we give these organizations the opportunity and the resources to do it correctly. This will come back to us in funding through our BOT and hopefully through permit fees of new businesses doing it. It is, it is an early win. We have made the commitment to equity. This is an important equity issue in many ways.
Thank you, Councilmember Chenier. Councilmember Carr.
I won't belabor this. Sometimes we give organizations just enough money and just enough time to fail and when there's capacity to be built, sometimes we don't stick with it long enough. So I'm going to be in favor of the substitute motion. If we get the money, if we get the grant money in, we can be reimbursed. If not, we've made a commitment to the core program. Let's get it on.
Thank you very much. Before, there's a call of the question here, I'm going to take a prerogative here as chair to say a couple of things. One, it has been a long time. Two, I think that the time has allowed us to have a better outcome. We've included not only the Urban League here as well as the Asian Pacific Chamber of Commerce, but also the Sacramento Regional Hispanic Chamber of Commerce. And when we're talking about restorative justice and righting a wrong and making sure that there's an inclusive component to this new industry, we've been able to accomplish that through this. I concur with Mr. Carr's point on that. I'll be supporting the substitute motion, but members, there's been a motion by Councilmember Harris, a second by Councilmember Ashby. We had a substitute mo...
He's got it.
I know. It's okay. So yeah, there's been a substitute motion by Councilmember Chenier and then a second by the mayor. With that, we will take a roll call vote because this is a two-thirds vote and I'll ask the clerk to call the roll on the substitute motion first.
Thank you. Councilmember Ashby?
No.
Councilmember Warren?
Yes.
Councilmember Harris?
No.
Councilmember Hanson?
Aye.
Councilmember Carr?
Aye.
Mayor Steinberg?
Aye.
Councilmember Chenier?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Guerra?
Aye.
If the clerk...
Aye.
Oh, aye. If the clerk could please report the outcome of the vote?
I have six ayes, so the motion passes.
Motion passes. Thank you very much, Mr. Devlin.
No, we're still...
Thank you, Eric. We have one more item on the consent calendar and that is item 37. Staff needed to present briefly on item 37. I assume that this is not controversial.
Are you sure?
Really?
It should not be.
Go ahead. I know there was a reason why you had to have to present on this, so go ahead.
Good evening, Mayor Steinberg and councilmembers. My name is Colin Bettis and I'm with the City Treasurer's Office. Here with me today is Brian Wong, the Debt Manager, also from the City Treasurer's Office, and Steve Johnson of DPFG, the Master Developers Financial Consultant. The item before you for your consideration today is the authorization of the issuance of the Natomas Meadows Community Facilities District Number 2007-01 Improvement Area Number 2, Series 2019 Bonds. Natomas Meadows Community Facilities District, or CFD for short, is located in North Natomas at the southeast corner of Del Paso Road and Gateway Park Drive. The debt service on the bonds will be payable from a receipt of special taxes from the CFD. Neither the city's general fund nor any other fund or source of funds will be pledged for the repayment of these bonds.
I think he has to read this part into the record or so I'm told.
You do. Go ahead. Read what you need to in the record, sir.
Yes. Okay. So, staff recommends that the city council pass a resolution that will authorize the issuance of the city of Sacramento Natomas Meadows Community Facilities District Number 2007-01 Improvement Area 2 Special Tax Bond Series 2019, the execution and delivery of a master indenture, a first supplemental indenture, a bond purchase contract, an official statement, and a continuing disclosure certificate, and certain other actions and connections with the bonds. This concludes my remarks.
Thank you. Move approval, Mayor.
Moved and seconded. No public testimony on this item. All in favor of item 37, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed abstain, that passes unanimously. Very good. We now move to item 38. Can this be moved without...
Open and close the public hearing.
Councilmember Carr? This is Councilmember Carr's district, so...
Move the item with this information. This is, these are 37 single-family houses.
Thirty-seven single-family houses?
It's across the street from North Laguna Park. There's been extensive community outreach. This fills a brown field that's been a magnet for dumping in our neighborhood and the developer has also provided a way for bicyclists and pedestrians to get across the street and get to the park. We better move the item.
It's been moved. It's been seconded, including the open and close the public hearing. Staff, anything that needs to be added? Thank you for your good work on this. Is there any public testimony on the item?
There's not.
If not, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed abstain. Very good. Let's move now to items 43 and 44. Can these be taken together? They're separate items. Okay, let's do item 43.
Can we...
Forty-three.
Can we waive the presentation?
I like the, I like the...
Hi. I'm sorry, go ahead.
It's very brief.
That's okay, go ahead.
All right. Good evening. My name is Louise Ella with the Sacramento Housing and Redevelopment Agency. On June 26, 2018, the Housing Authority approved the intent to issue tax exempt... Victory Town Homes, Dixie Anne Apartments, and Norwood Annex owned by Mutual Housing California. The report before you requests final approval, approval on mortgage revenue, bonds, and loan documents. Thank you.
Very good.
Yeah, I'd like to move the item, please.
Councilmember Warren moves in seconds. Thank you. Is there any public testimony on the item?
There's not.
There is not? Anything else to add? Nope. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstained. Thank you very much. All right. Last item of the evening is file item 44.
Good evening. For the record, my name is Louise Ella with the Sacramento Housing and Redevelopment Agency. On January 8th of 2019, the Housing Authority approved the intent to issue bonds for Cascade Village. The report before you requests final approval of tax-exempt mortgage revenue bond documents for the rehabilitation of Cascade Village. Thanks.
Very good. Thank you very much. Councilmember Gueda, this is your district.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to move to open and close the public hearing. So, let's get some little improvements on for Ridge Road.
For Ridge Road improvements. Very good. Okay, any other comments? If not, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained. That passes unanimously. Thank you to the Housing Authority staff for your good work. Appreciate it. And members, all right, are there council ideas and questions before we get to public comment on items not on the agenda? If, uh, we do have a few. Food truck season, here we go. Councilmember, Councilmember, Councilmember Harris. Where's the food truck park this weekend?
We're gonna have food trucks tomorrow night, every night, for the rest of your life. Actually, I would like to announce that the ESAC Improvement Association's Spring Meeting is tomorrow night, Wednesday, April 24th, 7:30 PM, at Clooney Community Center. Supervisor Serna, Police Chief Hahn, and myself will be speaking about the state of District Three. That's it.
Very good. Councilman Chenier? Thank you, Mayor. Really quickly, we are holding a meet and greet in Zeeburg Park, in the Zeeburg Park neighborhood, in Zeeburg Park. We're working on trying to create a neighborhood organization or neighborhood association there, and that's Saturday morning at 10:00 AM, and wanted to wish everybody a good holiday. I know it's past on Easter, but Passover is still going for those of you who are Jewish, so chag semeach on that one. Thank you. Councilman Gueda?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I received a letter from the first grade class of the Congregation of Benay Israel regarding Earth Day and what the city could do. I just wanted to read at least three of the comments, and I took out one-liners here. "We should help the earth, because otherwise it will turn into chaos." Joseph, thank you for your comments. "The earth is important to us and keeps us healthy." Elena, also, thank you for your comments. And one of my favorite ones here, "If we start now, we can stop something big, and then the earth won't explode." George, I appreciate your comments on that, on their comments on Earth Day. So, thank you to the first grade class of Congregation Benay Israel on Earth Day. Three announcements. Tahoe Park food trucks, this Friday, we're gonna have office hours at 5:00 PM, 26. May Fong Park, thank you to the Fong family, who's gonna also provide beverages for all those out there. May Fong was a, a, an amazing advocate for the community. We're gonna be recognizing the opening at noon this Saturday. Come bring your picnic, we're gonna have a picnic. And then Save the Date, May 11th at 11:00 AM. Cycle Mania, for May is Bike Month, is gonna be celebrating at Talik Village Center with a bike decorating contest, and prizes and encouraging bike safety.
Great stuff. Excellent. Councilman Carr?
Thank you, Mayor. Just very briefly, I'll be at Cabrillo Park Neighborhood Association. They're having, we're having a town hall meeting that's gonna be tomorrow at 6:00 PM at Living Stones Church, 1390 Florin Road. That's a town hall meeting at Cabrillo Park Neighborhood Association at the Living Stones Church. I understand you're gonna be out there Saturday, too, with the coffee.
I believe so.
They're gonna get a lot of us. That's all, Mayor.
Hopefully, there's a food truck. Very good. Councilmember Jennings?
Thank you, Mayor. Very quickly, John F. Kennedy High School Marching Band and Color Guard fundraiser will take place tomorrow, the 24th, from 6:00 to 9:00 PM at the Elks Lodge Number Six. We encourage you to come out and support the John F. Kennedy Marching Band and Color Guard. And then on the 29th, Monday, the 29th, we'll have a District Seven Town Hall meeting that'll take place at 6:00 PM at the Robbie Waters Library. Not only will District Seven be out there, but our Sacramento Police Department will be out there as well. So, it'll be a good time to find out all the issues in District Seven, and how you can become a part of the solution.
Very good. Thank you so much, members. We do have public testimony for items not on the agenda. We have 17 people, but I'm not sure everybody is still here, but we'll hear from-
I'm gonna read quite a few names, because I see people missing. Sally Shapiro, Mary Louise Blazovich. Wonderful, thank you. Following Mary Louise will be Tom Bennett, then Marcy Hyman, then Jay Hyman.
Okay.
Thank you.
I'm here briefly, just to ask the council to consider, or good evening, Mayor, excuse my poor manners, and councilmembers, if you would please consider adding another 30 seconds to this portion of public comments, for people to have a little bit more time to ask for what they would like. Thank you very much. Good night.
Thank you.
Thank you. Tom Bennett, and then Marcy Hyman.
Thank you, Mayor and city councilmembers, for allowing me to speak on the cannabis cultivation facilities in Robla Park. In 2016, United Way, which I am the Senior Vice President of Community Impact, launched the Square One Project. Our promise to prepare students for, to graduate from high school, ready for college and career. Our partnership with Robla School District, which is the poorest in the Sacramento community, our United Way, along with Sacramento County Office of Education, the Robla School District, funders, nonprofit organizations, and most importantly, the community members, have forged a partnership that has improved educational outcomes for kids in that district. Today, we stand with Robla Park in asking that the city council take steps to address a number of cannabis cultivation facilities allowed in the community as soon as possible. This is not indictment of the industry, but rather a request to listen to the community voice. Because this cap was not enacted, the City Planning Commission has been unable to address what constitutes undue concentration of cannabis cultivation facilities in the community. In Robla Park, there are currently 24, with another approval in the process, which has brought the community forward in opposition to that application. Because due on, because undue concentration has not been defined, the commission has been unable to reach a decision on the community's appeal for that commission for the last two meetings. Meanwhile, a sports facility in the community that relies on that facility has been displaced. Other owners and business, other business owners are concerned about what has, what will happen to their businesses, and most importantly, parents are concerned about the environment, public safety, and health impacts on their community. It is neither fair nor just to compare Robla Park with other areas zoned for cannabis cultivation, nor is it reasonable for the Planning Commission to have to rule on a case-by-case basis on what constitutes undue concentration of these facilities in this community. We're asking that the council make the determination so that the Planning Commission can exercise its responsibility. Excuse me. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Let me just say, so I appreciate your comments. I know it's not really fair to the Planning Commission to do this one-offs. I agree with you on that, so I'm gonna ask our city manager, we'll put it on our Law and Ledge log, and start taking that up. It's, I know they had one last week or two weeks ago.
Yeah.
They couldn't get to a decision.
Nope.
I don't know if that was you.
That's the one.
Yeah. So, I think we need to take that up as a policy consideration, so the Planning Committee, Planning Commission has parameters to go by in these decisions.
Guidance.
Okay.
Thank you. Good. Thank you very much.
Productive.
Marcy Hyman, and then Jay Hyman.
Good evening.
Time.
I'm also here to talk about the same thing. We're from Robla Park. Due to the amount of new cannabis businesses who want to move into our area, we're having a lot of committee meetings, a lot of times being used on it. We sat through two very, very long commission meetings on what to do about a particular applicant, or asking that the appeal that was brought up be brought up before you as a council, and that certain guidelines can be drawn up and given to the commissioners at planning, because eight hours' worth of their time is very important, too. So, that's my request, is that we get some-
I believe that they continue the items, right?
It has been continued again.
So, it's, it's back at their level. I'm not sure that we would get to a policy in time for them on this specific issue, but we can see what we can do.
I have sent in a request letter that the appeal process be brought up to you.
Good. That isn't the current process, is it? The Planning Commission?
It went before the regular meeting. It was approved, then an appeal was brought up.
Yeah.
And then we've had two long meetings, but nothing got done. We're back at Square One, and it's not gonna resolve again.
Let us look, let us look at this, okay? Councilman Chenier, you'll make point here? Yeah. Yeah, I don't know when it's scheduled for the Planning Commission again. They couldn't get a majority of votes on this, one way or another. Okay. So, we'll talk to them. Thank you.
Next speaker is Jay Hyman, then Earl Levels, then Jade Nicole.
For some reason, everybody, at least a number of the speakers, have seemed intent on commenting on how long they've lived in Sacramento. I recall being here in 1955, so any of the rest of you that were here then, greetings. My comments tonight are on behalf of the Robla Park Community Association. We urge the council to adopt limits on the current proliferation of cannabis-related establishments in the Robla area. The relatively unrestrained approval process appears to have thus far failed to adequately assess the actual adverse impacts the issuance of a significant number of these conditional use permits have had. A number of established, desirable, revenue-producing enterprises have been forced to relocate out of the Robla area due to the rush to acquire a cannabis-related CUP. The resultant inflation of rates for rentals and prices for facilities are putting pressure on many business owners to relocate to less cannabis-affected areas, destroying what business diversity may have previously existed. A number of these have moved completely out of the Sacramento area and are in a different county. We urge the council to adopt a cap at the current level, and if this is not possible, then to impose a moratorium on the issuance of new CUPs until such time as a suitable cap can be established. Thank you.
Thank you.
Is Mayor excited?
Yeah.
I just would like to suggest that I'm hearing the folks from Robla, that's a District Two issue. It's spread a bit into District One, because the owner of the cannabis entity lived in District One, and I appreciate that Councilmember Chenier is willing to take the item to law and ledge. I just wonder, I know Councilmember Carr and Jennings and I, and Warren have talked about this in the past, perhaps it's an item that could skip law and ledge, and could come directly to council for a full discussion of the council's input, in terms of what overconcentration would be for all of our districts, rather than law and ledge.
Well, it's my limited experience. When we've brought cannabis-related items to the full city council, it's sort of hard to keep it, keep, keep order in the chambers, yeah, but we, let's talk about it.
I just think from the four council districts that are not included in law and ledge, it's a very important issue, and there are four votes on law and ledge, and so by the time things get to council, sometimes they are like a takeout baked pizza that you just throw in the oven, and we've had very little input. And the four districts that are not on law and ledge represent the two most northern points and the two most southern points of the city. Therefore, the central city is the primary representation on law and ledge, and sometimes the issues are just a little bit different in the outer parts of the city, and I would argue that Robla is a perfect example of that.
Let's talk about how to, how to handle this, okay? Good. Sir?
Earl Levels, yes. To the mayor and to the city council, especially District Eight, and the rest of the council. I'm here for a purpose. I sent a letter to your office, Mayor. I never got a response. I did send a video to, and I never got a response. I attempted to stand before you and testify for a second time, but there was a ruckus in the room, and I had to leave.
What's the issue, sir?
The issue is problems with police departments, discrimination against African-Americans. When you can't walk in a store without being followed because you're African-American, that's not American. When you can't make a report without a police officer who is biased, that's not American. When you go to Turner's Affairs, and you have to go through a bunch of changes for a whole year to get your complaint pushed through, through City Hall and other agencies that you have to meet with, that's not fair. It should be automatic, and I hope that process has changed.
Sir, I got Scott White, my deputy chief staff here. I'm gonna make, ask Scott to make sure that you are connected with Francine Turnhour, our Office of Public Safety Accountability Chief Officer here, so that she can hear your complaint-
Yeah.
-and you can get an actual substantive response, okay?
Okay, but I'm, I'm not finished. I really feel strongly that Sacramento's bigger than this. To murder, to lie, to cover up, to shoot an unarmed man down, to shoot a principal who's trying to stop another kid from carrying a gun into the schoolroom and killing other kids. It's sad. And the last time I was here, and I did go before you, I was so emotional, I couldn't even talk. I was ashamed of you guys, everybody in this room. And I'm just here to make sure that you understand, those videotapes I sent to District Eight and to you, that's to show that there is racism here, Sacramento everywhere, and we have to work to destroy that racism. Thank you.
I understand. Can we connect the gentleman to Francine, please? Sure, appreciate it. Okay?
And next speaker is Jade Nicole, then David Bach, then Tuesday Seals Perkins. Is Jade here? I don't see Jade. David Bach?
I'm excited.
Thank you. David Bach? And then following Mr. Bach is Tuesday Seals Perkins.
Mr. Mayor, councilmembers, good evening. I saw a problem in the deferred compensation problem, or accounts, and tried to report it to the CU people to get into their, to help people better manage their accounts. This is an actual account, the deferred compensation plan. I can't put it on a flash drive here for security reasons. It's in 16 mutual funds. This is what the service provider for deferred comp has done to this individual. It's a $43,000 account. They're one year from retirement. It's 55% stocks. It should be 55% bonds. This is not the first person it's happened to. Excessive fees, over $300 last year. You multiply this by tens of millions of times across the United States, and this is where the Federal Reserve System says we've got $17 billion of excesses fees. It starts right down here on this account. I've been trying to get into the CU to help the city employees better manage their deferred compensation count, but I can't get in. David Newman is like a black hole. Information goes in. I've been working with him, trying to work with him for over a year. Nothing comes out. I gave this presentation to Mr. Jennings, then corporate, or community developer, Mr. Chow, three months ago, and he says it was interesting. He'd get back to me. He hasn't. I don't know if he's shared this with you. If not, I'll give you this copy. They need help, and I want to provide it. compensation count, but I can't get in. David Newman is like a black hole. Information goes in. I've been working with him, trying to work with him for over a year. Nothing comes out. I gave this presentation to Mr. Jennings, then corporate or community developer, Mr. Chow, three months ago, and he says it was interesting. He'd get back to me. He hasn't. I don't know if he's shared this with you. If not, I'll give you this copy. They need help, and I want to provide it. It reflects negatively on my profession as to what the service provider is doing to the people, and I don't like that. Get me into the CU program. Thank you.
Mr. Bach, I will have somebody on my staff reach out to you and follow up.
Thank you.
James?
She has my information. Thank you.
We have your info. Thank you, sir, for coming tonight.
Next speaker is Tuesday Seals Perkins, then Larry Duff, then Sandra Strong.
I'd like for the council not to interrupt me, so I have my two minutes. Please. So, Mayor Steinberg, you know that I've emailed you, and Councilwoman Jennings, who has frequently failed my son Colin. He failed him with Pocket Little League, when he didn't step in because he wanted the votes when they wouldn't let him play, and he didn't want to touch it. That's what him and Dennis Rogers said. So, a little boy who went to Didion, who should have been able to play baseball with all of his friends, Jennings didn't want to go near. Now, you and I both know that this problem at the sports bar is a lot more complicated, and we're not going to discuss those issues right here. What we're going to discuss is the fact that when you license someone, you have an obligation to make sure that they follow the law. When an 11-year-old boy walks into a place of African-American descent with autism, and you've all seen the video, and wants his tater tots, he's entitled to get them. And if you license a bar that on record drugs, racism complaints, ADA violation complaints, health code complaints, code violations, cigarette ordinance complaints, gang fights, not reporting guns, intoxicated individuals who are almost hitting people, labor law, and not posting appropriate signs, and you do nothing, you're complicit. So, I am telling you that I have filed a Department of Justice complaint, and I'm also telling you, do not ever send the police out to my house again to make sure that I can handle this appropriately. And I find it offensive that the city attorney and the city managers offers think this is funny, because there's nothing funny about it. Have a good night.
Our next speaker is Larry Duff, then Sandra Strong, then Dan Adherholt.
Before Ms. Strong comes up, again, you're entitled to your two minutes, but I prefer that we actually get, try to help you individually if we can. Not you. I'm not talking to you, ma'am. Talking to Ms. Strong. Go ahead.
My name is Larry Duff. Good evening, board members. Ralph here had an idea, and former school board members may like this. On 26th and G and 27th is an old school called Old Marshall. It's been empty for a long, long time. It has three floors, a ground floor and two others, restrooms. How is it that-- It's quite possible that the homeless could actually live there if you wanted to negotiate with the school district to lease the facility. It has a huge parking lot. It has another building there, and it's just been vacant for years. That's it. It's a good idea. Ralph came up with it.
Yes, Steve?
Mr. Duff, the school district actually has been working with some affordable housing developers to repurpose the school. It needs significant work, and we couldn't put the use in there that you're intending, but they are working to turn it into some senior housing and some other affordable housing.
Cool.
It's very slow-going at the school district right now for a variety of reasons, but we are on it, and we are pushing them. Thank you.
Thank you for coming to the city council tonight.
All right. Bow wow.
Sandra Strong, and then Dan Adherholt.
That's very exciting to hear about that school on Chief Street, and thank you, Mayor Steinberg, for the option. But this has to do with wonderful compliments to your staff here in that you have saved many people, or trying to save many young people, from vaping and tobacco, and so I wanted to share that with you because it's very, very admirable. You're all such big people, and you have such big tasks. I think my task is big and grows on a daily basis, but yours is much bigger. So, where I'm at, there is tobacco allowed indoors and outdoors, and there's no regulation. And so, as I have tobacco inside my apartment and wear this mask inside my apartment, and I purposely am wearing this today in front of you, it's not my choice to do that, but it keeps my symptoms at bay rather than experience them in this apartment, because the state of California says those walls in 10 years will still outgass. But there's more foul odors in there now present than I'm trying to get some eradication of rats. But I wanted to give you great compliments to your reaching out to young people, as much as they probably are, many of them have rebelled on that aspect. It's such a deadly substance, you know? I never knew that there was anything about third-hand smoke, and I knew about second-hand smoke that could cause me to have a headache, but nothing about third-hand smoke that is in walls and in cars, and it's deadly. It's absolutely deadly. I suffered a handful of symptoms plus, so I just wanted to give you great compliments to your services.
Thank you. Thank you, ma'am. Thank you.
Next speaker is Dan Adherholt, then Raquel Renee, Grace Heady, and then Erica J.
Good evening, everyone. As per record, I'm Dan Adherholt. I'm a newly-elected executive board member of the Thomas Community Association and head of the Thomas Homes Committee now reformed. I'm also leader of the American Home Crew. I'm here today basically to talk to Jeff Harris and you, Mayor, about Garden Highway project. We stopped cleaning, me and my American Home Crew stopped cleaning along the American-- I mean, Garden Highway, because we're told you guys are going to be doing the projects, so we stopped cleaning. Now, I've been away because I had a medical issue. My daughter was hit by a car, so I was gone for a week. I just got back, and I found out the whole area's being thrashed again. So, I would like to know when you guys plan on doing this project, because I'd like to get my crews down there clean before, until you guys do start that project. I would like to work with you guys, get the area cleaned down there, because it's becoming a disaster out there right now. And we have found a lot of syringes over there by North Gate and Arden area right there, and that's not acceptable. That goes down the river. It could be ending up in our Discovery Park. It could end up on our beaches. Kids could step on it, and I don't want that happening. We've been fighting to keep that from happening, and I just want to know basically what, when you guys plan on doing this project, so I could get my crews down there, clean down there, and we can keep the area safe until you guys get started. That's all I got to say. Thank you, Dan. Thank you very much. Appreciate it. So, can you guys please email me or let me know what's going on, Jeff Harris or somebody, so we could talk?
Dan, are you talking about the flood control projects on the Garden Highway? Is that the project you're talking about?
Yeah, but you came to our Thomas Community Association and talked about the project going on over there. I was told you guys are starting that a week and a half ago.
Yeah, so I'm having a public meeting about all those projects a week from tomorrow.
Week from tomorrow?
South of Thomas Community Center.
Oh, that's what that means about?
I'll have my staff send you information.
Okay, Dan.
Thank you, Jeff Harris.
Jeff will be in touch. Thank you so much.
Our last three speakers are Raquel Renee, Grace Heady, and then Erica J.
Hello, Mayor and city councilmembers. My name is Raquel Renee. That's not my real name, but, you know. My main issue I want to talk about is human sex trafficking, but I'm going to just put it out there that I've been homeless for six years with my mom. I was with SHR until they kicked us off their list multiple times. I have gone assistance from Department of Human Assistance barely, who said and put on our case file that we chose to be homeless. I never chose to be homeless at 15, or 13, or 18, all through high school and middle school, but your caseworker, who works for the county, put that on my case file, and it's still on there as of today, even though I'm 19, and I've asked them to take it off multiple times, because I never chose to be homeless, not an alcoholic, neither is my mom, and I'm not into drugs, and neither is she, so. And I've been on SHR's list, and they've kicked us off multiple times. I've called them multiple times. I've actually called your office multiple times, and I've talked to Louis, I think, who said he would give me a call back or an email back from SHR, and they never did. My main issue I would like to talk about is human sex trafficking. It's a huge issue here, and we ignore it completely. My best friend was kidnapped and was in it, and they actually got DNA and had a match that was on her body to another man, and he was never arrested. And he's been arrested multiple times after the date of the rape for drugs and robbery and whatever else, but never for the rape. So, SacPD sucks. I actually was in their Criminal Justice Magnet Academy and honestly regret that at this point, because it's a disgrace. I used to always be so proud to live in Sacramento, and it's-- I'm 19, and I honestly cannot stand this city. I can't wait to have money to move out from here.
Is there anything we can do for you and your mom now? I mean, to help you now? I hear everything that you said, but is there anything we can do to help you now?
First, you knew my mom before. She used to run a national night out for drug and crime on Rain Avenue, and she used to hold it, and a bunch of city council members used to go, and Doris Matsui and Kevin McCarty used to go, and then, you know, divorce happened, so that goes to crap. But I don't know. What can you do?
I don't know. I'd be willing to sit down and meet with you.
That'd be great.
I really would.
Considering that I've called multiple times to your office, and I've gone the runaround from Louis, who just says, oh, SHR will give you an email back to talk about your application.
I'd be happy to try to sit down with you next week personally, okay?
--for his mate compassion. He doesn't support survivors. Look at how he's treating--
Excuse me, ma'am. You can leave.
I ask with your right privilege--
Thank you.
--survivor, look how he's treating me. That's because it compromises who you are. Most of your buddies support the sex trade industry.
Okay.
Okay.
Anyways, thank you for your comments. I'd be happy if you'd want to-- I'll take your number, okay?
Right now, or?
Grace Heady, I have it.
It's on the list.
It's Grace Heady, by the way.
Grace Heady is our next speaker, and then Erica J.
Hi, good evening. I'm Grace. She's my best friend. I'm actually the girl she mentioned that got kidnapped. I used to live in Oak Park, and when I was 17, just turned 17, I got kidnapped and beaten and assaulted multiple times and drugged. I was assaulted by 47 different men, but I know by name the man who took me, Glenn Tilson. Anyways, I think there needs to be some type of reform or resources to go to the Special Victims Unit. When I was kidnapped, I got impregnated by one of my abductors, and so I have a son now. But they have DNA on him, and among other things, and they have evidence, they have the tox screen, and so mainly I just, I know that there's other girls. I came into contact with other girls that were in the same situation, and I know my abductor, he was going to send me to-- he had a house out of state that he sent a lot of girls to, and they've never been seen again. And he had planned to send me there, so it's, you know, look at the positive, you know? I got out, and I have a son. But I know there's other girls, and so I just, I wish there was something more. You know, I have a friend, she told a man her-- she was 18 when she was 16, they had consensual sex, and now he's facing like 13 felonies and gonna serve a long time because of that, and she's going to trial for that, but I just wish there was something to be done for other cases like mine, but thank you for my time.
Thank you for coming tonight and telling your story. Appreciate it. Thank you. Thank you.
Erica J is our final speaker.
Am I the last one?
Yes.
Hi. I just want to say that I actually feel kind of at home right now, because most of my work has been working with trafficking, so.
Thank you for sharing your story.
So, I wanted to speak with you guys because the SRO on Capitol Park, I am not going to argue and say that that place does not need to be rehabilitated and fixed up. I don't think anyone else living there right now would argue with that either. What my concern is, is because as a member of the Sacramento Tenants Union, we have, man, more than a handful of cases coming out from SHR, where families, literally, one of the families, she had a social worker, an attorney, reach out to SHR two times within one year because she's carrying her child with cerebral palsy. Another family was documented for, I have the document on my phone, for two years in a row, and they were an emergency placement for their foster youth, and SHR waited till that full two years went by to then give them a 30-60-day notice. My concern is for the people living there at the building right now, they have stability. Some of them are a very vulnerable population because of age, because of their criminal backgrounds. I know that there were similar, there was a similar population over at the Twin Rivers residents, and I don't know how much you guys talk with SHR. I'm sure some of you guys are more friendly with them than others, but there needs to be some more either oversight or more collaboration together in making sure that these people actually do get relocated somewhere, because at Twin Rivers, there was a handful of people who, they got lost, and they're at different sites. Some have moved out.
You raise a very compelling point, something we talked about earlier this evening, and we have an absolute obligation to relocate people consistent with their wishes and their state of life, but you understand the catch-22 in a sense that we have. We have an opportunity to also house 180 homeless people while not causing homelessness for current people who are living there, and that it's our obligation to do both. We understand that.
Right.
It's not perfect, but we understand that it does no good or less good if we're displacing people and they become homeless. So, we are very sensitive to this, and thank you for reiterating it.
Can I just ask that you guys be more part of that process with SHR?
Yes, we will be. I promise you, because we have to define a lot of the kind of shelter this is going to be and the rules, and Councilmember Hanson, I know will be on top of it, as will I, okay?
I would just say, we talked extensively at the 2:00 meeting about this very issue, and so I'd welcome you to look at that and give me your comments.
I did.
Okay, good. Well, keep, stay engaged, and hopefully we can do more.
Twin Rivers had two relocation specialists for more than 100 people.
I'm sorry, ma'am, but this is not supposed to be give and take. We already talked about this issue.
No, we already--
But I just, I want to encourage you to stay involved.
Thanks for coming.
You'll know you have the information.
Mr. Mayor, can we-- I know Steve brought this up, and I was out while he did. I don't know how far you went. I'd like to adjourn in Frank Toppings' memory. I think that would be appropriate.
Yep.
We all knew him. He testified for many, many years, and--
Mental health champion.
Mental health champion, so with that.
In Frank Toppings' memory. Word adjourned. Thank you.